Thank you. This morning, we'll begin the invocation by Pastor Tierso Gonzalez. Welcome Pastor. And I would like to ask that our city attorney, Mr. Doug Sloan, lead us in the pledge of allegiance after the invocation.
Would you mind all standing? First of all, just want to thank you for the opportunity of being here and your presence. And Fresno is a great city, so you have a big responsibility. And I appreciate your sacrifice and your servanthood that you have taken here in Fresno. So we all bow our heads. Well, we thank you today, dear God, on this day, March 31st, for another opportunity, another time of hope, another chance to live, dear God, to make the decisions that are based upon you, dear God. We thank you for all that you've done, all that you continue to do throughout this great city of Fresno. There's a lot of things taking place here in the next few days, in this time, and change. I ask you to touch every individual, dear God, every district leader, every council member, every attorney, mayor, and every different aspect, dear God. We want to do things based on you, based on ethics, based on wisdom, and based on understanding. In Proverbs 13:19, it says, "The Lord by wisdom hath founded the earth; by understanding hath he established the heavens." Lord, help us, dear God, here in Fresno. Dear God, by wisdom, found what you need in this city, dear God, and with understanding, establish the direction that we need in the city, that the city is going, dear God. We ask you to help us, to lead us and direct us, dear Lord. You see every district official, dear God, you know the changes, everything that's going on in this time, dear God. We ask you to continue to give them the wisdom that they need, Lord, to make the choices that best fits the people, dear God, that you've allowed to live in this great town, dear Lord. Lord, help us to continue to be servants. Help us continue to be led and directed by you, dear God, to help us not to wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against rulers of darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places, dear God. You see the different strongholds that bind this town, that bind the city in different areas of this great town. Lord, we ask you to give us the direction we need, Lord. Touch every individual, dear God. Touch the chief of police, dear God. Help us protect them, dear Lord, as they wake up every day, dear God, and go upon these streets to help to do the best interests of the people, dear God. Once again, we ask you, dear Lord, to touch every individual that stands in front of me today, dear God, as they continue to make the right choices, dear God, in the direction, dear Lord, that is led by you, dear God, by the spirit and the knowledge of you. We ask you to help us, to continue to direct us. Thank you one more time, like I said, dear Lord, for another, just another opportunity to live. Lord, we thank you. In the wonderful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
And now the pledge? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you Pastor. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are several changes to the agenda. Each of you should have a page like this to follow along because it is so much. The first thing is item 1I, file number 16337. The amended title should read, "Actions related to stormwater runoff and recharge evaluation in the downtown cultural arts district, Council District III. Number one, approve a professional agreement with Blair, Church, and Flynn to evaluate stormwater runoff and groundwater recharge potential in the downtown cultural arts district." That's the first change. Same item, there's a change to the staff report. Item number one should read, "Approve an agreement with Blair, Church, and Flynn (BCF) to evaluate stormwater runoff and groundwater recharge potential in the cultural arts district and authorize Public Works Director or Deserted Me to execute the agreement." So in this item, we're removing amendment to the existing agreement. Next, under item, General Administration, item 2E, file number 16280. It's going to be continued to April 21st per staff. And finally, items 3B and 3C are going to be heard at 11 o'clock. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Motion, is there a second? Second? Councilmember Soria? Okay, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, are there any changes to the minutes of March 17th? City Clerk?
Sorry, no changes to the minutes.
Okay, approval? Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion passes. Thank you. Councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Soria?
Just have a couple of things that I did want to report on. On March 26th, District One had our second annual Women's History Month program where we recognized eight women from the district that are doing some phenomenal work transforming our neighborhoods. Then on March 28th, Councilmember Baines and I hosted a Tower District Neighborhood Meeting to address public safety concerns that have been looming over the last few months in terms of the rise in crime. We were joined by our city manager Bruce Rudd and Chief Jerry Dyer, along with a number of the officers that served the area. And so we're grateful that our administration was present. We did have over 300 residents in attendance. Many issues were discussed. There was a lot of great information that was provided by our chief. I know that number of folks are wanting to see if we will schedule a follow-up meeting in the coming months. I did want to just point out, Bruce, that, I don't know if you've read some of the headlines, but one of the comments made by the chief was that we will be having, we would have a police satellite office in the Tower Theater. I don't know if that's completely accurate. I think there's been maybe some miscommunications. I think we have to really finalize the location and clarify that because I think the press has covered it as it's going to be in the Tower Theater, and I don't think that's completely accurate. So I think we have to kind of circle back, put our heads together, and finalize that location because I think we did talk about having that location up and running by August. I don't know if you want to add?
Well, I'm going to need to follow up because until the night of the meeting, I had not even heard about us having a satellite facility in the Tower. So I have to follow up with the chief because that was news to me as well as the community that was present.
Yeah, and I think that the community, as you saw, reacted very positively for this amenity there. I think it's going to be crucial. My office, and I know Councilmember Baines will probably would like to work with you guys to find a location so that we actually do make it a reality. You know, we're the ones in the neighborhoods, and then we'll get hammered if this doesn't happen by August as was promised. So we'll work on you, with you, on that issue. I don't know if you want to add anything? No? Okay.
No, I was just doing my impersonation of someone who gets over the skis a little bit too much.
Then just, I also just wanted to add, March, on March 29th, which was Tuesday, we launched in the Tower District, it's called Power the Tower. It's a partnership with Fresno State University and Environmental Defense Fund. We got a grant, our district office got a grant from this organization to provide funds to Fresno State, to provide us some researchers to do a pilot study to help tower businesses save money on their electricity bills and power businesses with clean, renewable, and affordable energy technologies. So we're very excited about this project. We had a number of local businesses come out, learn about what we're going to be doing, and meet the Dr. Pasha, who's the lead investigator out of the College of Engineering. And so we're very excited to be able to start some analysis in terms of electricity bills. We heard some comments from some of the business owners like Sequoia Brewery, or Sequoia the Restaurant, that their bill on the highest days or the highest months are $9,000 a month. And so these small businesses would definitely benefit from looking at alternative sources of energy. And so we're excited to be able to partner up with not only Fresno State, but Environmental Defense Fund to see if we can come up with some policy solutions to help the small businesses in the Tower area, and then if it's successful, we can expand to other areas. Lastly, I also want to just share that the Capital Projects Oversight Board Review Meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 4th at 5:30. The agenda will include a workshop on the BRT and also an update on our water project. Thank you, those are all my comments.
Is there any other councilmember reports and comments? Okay. I'd like to report that last night I went into the Warner's Theater for the Downtown Association State of the Downtown Address, and Councilmember Baines was there, of course. But you have a lot to be proud of, Councilmember Baines. I know that you work very closely with the different organizations down there to work on all these improvements and bring it to fruition, to where it's at today. And it seems like they've really got the good motivation going and keeping it forward. So, good job. Okay, that concludes our councilmember reports and comments. Moving on to the consent calendar, would any councilmember like to pull an item for Councilmember Soria?
So I'd just like to put on the record, I don't know if I necessarily have to pull it, but that I'm a no vote on the item 1D.
1D?
Yes.
You can just register the no vote on that.
So I'll register a no vote for that, thank you.
Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one correction on the WIB item for the appointment of Lydia Zabricki. She's listed as a public sector joint city-county appointee, but she's actually a private sector joint city-county appointee. So I just wanted to have that read into the record and correct it.
That's a correction, then?
That's correction.
Okay. Is there any other councilmembers that would like to pull an item or make any comment on it? I see none. Okay. Now, screen is clear, is there a motion to approve the balance?
Counsel, did we go out to the public?
No, we didn't. Okay. I asked them if anybody else wanted, okay. Does any member of the public wish to speak on any consent item? Okay, none? Thank you. Thank you. That's why I had to do the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Okay, now is there a motion to approve the balance? Motion by Councilmember Soria, second by myself. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. We have a lively group this morning, folks. Okay. Moving on to General Administration, next is the General Administration 2A Surface, Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, item from staff. Is there a presentation?
I think Tommy was going to talk to that.
Where's Tommy?
He was in a meeting, he was, he should be on his way right now.
Tommy doesn't have priorities? Where's the city manager? Should we hold the city manager?
Can we skip it and do the next two?
Councilmember Brand, you may have to deal with that one a little bit later then. Okay, then we'll move on to, let me see here, item 2A. We'll go to 2B, that is the action pertaining to the construction of South Industrial Collection System Infrastructure, is that also Tommy's or?
I'll handle that one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Kevin, good morning, councilmembers. I'm Kevin Norgard, Department of Public Utilities, Wastewater Management Division. The item before you has three actions. The first is to adopt the 34th Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution 2015-104, appropriating additional $1,860,000 for the construction of the South Industrial Collection System. The second action item is the award of the construction contract in the amount of $5,89,853 to Emmett Excavation, Inc. of Fresno, California. And the last item is to approve the agreement for repair of Fresno County roads for the construction of the South Industrial Collection System Infrastructure projects. So this project is to install sewers north of Central Avenue and south of Central Avenue in East Orange and Cedar Avenues. And that is in this sphere of influence, and it's to keep up with the master plan, the general plan, which is planned, and light industrial, heavy industrial. So that's all I have.
Okay, is there any comments from the public? Anybody from the public wishing to speak? None? Okay, we'll bring it back to the, to the dais, Councilmember Brand. Brandau?
Thank you, Council President Quintero, or Vice President Quintero. Actually, I had punched in when we were going to talk about the water treatment facility, and then when that got moved. So I didn't really punch in here, but I will make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Brandau, is there a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. 1, 2, 3, 6-0 with President Capriolo absent. Item 2C, or, I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. Tommy, are you ready for your presentation, item 2A? Councilmember Brandau?
I am ready, and I apologize. I am so sorry for missing that deadline this morning. This council, this agenda item is to ask council to approve Construction Change Order Number One for the 80 million gallon per day Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant to reduce the lump sum scope by $1,153,313 and establish a $1 million supplemental work payment line item and add a value engineering procedure to the contract. In November of 19th of 2015, City Council approved award of the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant for $158 million. The original award, the original cost estimate for that facility in the rate plan was $160 million, so we were happy that the bids came in under that amount. Since that time, we've been, the contractor's been out there, several of, all of you, I think, were at the groundbreaking ceremony, and they were moving dirt and getting busy and getting after it. What we'd like to do with $1 million of this deduction is to establish a supplemental work line item that will allow us to make payments to the contractor for things that come up during the course of construction. All of those items that we authorized the contractor to proceed with will be routed through the Capital Projects Oversight Committee so that they will be kept apprised of those things. Several items have come up since the construction started. When we, when they started moving dirt, they found a groundwater well that hadn't been marked, so we needed to pay them to get that taken care of. They found the septic tank, wasn't marked on the draw, they had to take that taken care of. Found a trash pit from the old activities on the landfill, excuse me, on the farm property. So all of those things are just items that come up during the normal course of construction when you're tearing out the dirt. And so this would allow us to keep the contractor moving and authorize him to do those work items and make sure he's got money to keep it going. And again, all of these will be brought to the Capital Projects Oversight Committee as we, as we proceed through the project. So with that, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Tommy. Now we'll take it out to the public. Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it up to the dais, Councilmember Brandau?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Tommy, just wanted to clarify a few things. So, actually, the project's being reduced in cost, right?
Reduced in cost, correct.
So, for starters, let me say kudos to you and your department. Fantastic work. So, the $1 million in the supplemental, if we take and shift a $1 million into that supplemental, in my thoughts, and you and I had a private meeting about this, that, and you led me to believe that that could actually lead to further costs, further cost reductions.
Correct, right.
Could you explain, so for folks in the public?
Correct. So the change order that we've negotiated has an initial cost reduction of 1.1 million, and it also has a provision that if the contractor, through his work, identifies other potential cost-saving measures, that those can be brought to the city for our consideration, and we can accept those. And again, our valuation would be, is the value that he's proposing fair and reasonable? And the other factors we will consider are, does it change the nature of the work? Does it impact the operations? So anything that comes to us, good value, doesn't change the nature, quantity, or quality of the work, we would go ahead and try and entertain those, and the contractors incentivize now to bring those to our attention.
And an example like what we were talking about when we had that meeting was, say somebody has a $25,000, not very much in the scope of this project, a $25,000 cost that was not anticipated. Right now, with this $1 million supplemental, you can allow them to do that work rather than hold up the project to get approval from the council to do that $25,000 job, is that right?
That's correct. And then, and we've had two so far, and they've been in the $2,500, $3,000 range that we've been just-
So even $2,500 price tags, if they weren't anticipated, could kind of hinder the bigger project, right?
Correct.
So, hey, before, we have to move this street sign, or we have to move this one little thing, and this supplemental will allow that work to be done and not hold up the project, and could bring cost reductions.
That's exactly right. That's correct. And then again, all of those we brought to the Capital Projects Oversight Committee when they meet. And so we've got a meeting on Monday, we'll update them on the status of those. So we'll be reporting all of those little things that come up that we required to use the supplemental to advance the project.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot, Tommy. Again, good job out there getting the cost of this project reduced so early in the ballgame. So I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation and begin this supplemental.
We have a motion with a second. Councilmember Soria?
Thank you, Tommy, for your presentation, and also thank you for making the time to meet with me as well offline to just answer some of my questions. And again, I just want to echo what my council colleague just said, kudos to reducing cost. So just a question, if these funds are not used up, like if we don't have to, if we don't end up having, having to use any of the other $1 million that we set aside, what happens to the funds once the project is complete?
So the project just doesn't cost that much? So we would write a final change order for the contractor that would reduce all the money that we didn't use in the supplemental. So in a couple of weeks, we'll be bringing one like you for, as an example, for the T4 water tank. We had a supplemental line item in that. We didn't use all the money, so we're going to write a final change order for that project reflecting that we didn't use it all, and the actual cost of the project is actually less than what was awarded by council.
So could that have a possibility to change the rates or slow down any of the increments?
Exactly. So all of these cost savings we're seeing, either during construction, during bidding, during the delivery of the projects, those will all be factored into how much financial requirements we need from the rates, correct?
Okay, perfect. And then just the last question, I think I asked this when you were in my office. These supplemental work payment line items are typical, right?
They are typical, and I apologize. This should have been one of the line items in the project. It didn't get included, so we were able to work with the contractor to add it after. But all the projects we'll be bringing to you in the future, Kings River Pipeline, Frank Kern Pipeline, RTMs, it'll all be integrated with the project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other councilmembers punched up, do I have a motion for this? Okay, we had a first and a second. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes with Councilmember, Council President Capriolo absent. Thank you, Tommy. Okay, next, we move right along to item 2C. This is to approve the agreement for the pre-purchase of a biotrickling filter odor control system from Evoqua Water Technologies. We all need one of those. In the amount of $2,543,000 for future installation for a Headworks facility for the Fresno-Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility.
Good morning again. The item before you is the pre-purchase agreement for the biotrickling filter for the odor control system at the Headworks Building for 2.5 million plus. The reason this item is before you is to allow us to have a better design when we're designing the system. Typically, when you buy these systems, there might be two towers on one or four towers on another manufacturer's. And by pre-purchasing, it allows us to know exactly how many are coming in, and all the piping configurations, all the electrical configurations are set up specifically for that. If we didn't do this, we would have to pay the contractor to redesign our base design if we got a different manufacturer than the system was designed around. The reason we're here now is the project is basically on hold. We finished the design based on this manufacturer, so we're holding bidding based on your approval. If you approve this, then we'll put the project out to bid next week or the week after. So we finished the design. So if you have any questions, I'll be available.
Get out to the public, is there any questions from the public? Any questions from the dais? Okay, got a question. In putting this out to bid, how many bidders do you expect?
Oh, for this, probably, we've been getting around four or five.
Four or five?
Four or five contractors, yeah, for the construction. Yeah.
For the construction?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Is there any local bidders?
Yeah.
That would be all?
Yeah, typically, we'll see, like, Lyles will bid on it. I don't know who else will. This is kind of a specialty thing, so it might be out-of-town people, too.
Yeah.
But the-
Well, we expect that.
Yeah.
Anyway. But Lyles might be your only one locally?
Yeah, there's others, like Floyd Johnson might bid it. I don't think they would, but they might. There's a couple other contractors that we would, that we reach out to.
I was just interested to see that, or see that we should try to get the local bidders.
Yeah. And by pre-purchasing, this increases the odds that we'll get more local people because it reduces that specialty construction that they would have to do.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, no one else is on the screen, is there a motion to accept? I'll make the motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Soria, all in favor? Aye, aye. I guess there's four of us. We're going to have to go by screen, everybody's awake, so with Councilmembers, Brandau, Baines, Capriolo absent. I'm sorry, Brand, I was testing you. I get you guys mixed up. Okay. Okay, motion passes. Next item is the awarding a contract in the amount of $132,000 over five years to Entrado Inc. for Beware browser-based software to extract information from public and commercial sources applicable to 911 calls, providing law enforcement with location-based accident-related information.
Council, Council Vice President Quintero, I think we may want to hold off on that item. I don't see any staff here for that. City Manager?
Okay.
So we should hold off for, okay?
Where's our peoples? Everybody's absent. Okay, moving right along to, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Baines for bringing that up. Item 2E then, is awarded a three-year contract in the amount of $508,640 to Turbo Data Systems- Item 2E then, is awarded a three-year contract in the amount of $508,640 to Turbo Data Systems Inc. for parking citation services with the option of up to two, to four, two-year extensions, and sponsored by DARM.
Vice President Quintero, that item had been postponed until June, excuse me, to April 21st?
I knew that. I was testing you.
Okay.
All right, we're good. Item 2F, award a sole contract for predictive policing software. Has that one been? We're going to hold off on that one, too?
I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any police department personnel here for that either.
City manager, where's your people? He's got two. Okay. They're overworked. That's true, that's true.
I am told that Chief Armour is on his way, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, let's go to item 3A, City Council, which is Council Boards and Commissions, Communications, Reports, Assignments, and/or Appointments, Reappointments, Removals from City and Non-City Boards and Commissions. Do I see or have any council members wishing to report on their committees or commissions? None? Okay.
I'll report for my Airboard Service, Councilmember Quintero. I recently took a trip with the Airboard to Washington, DC. We were trying to lobby to get the Clean Air Act modernized with some kind of common-sense provisions. Happy to report that the trip was very successful. While we were there, very next week, legislation was introduced to accept our recommendations, and I'll be returning back to Washington, DC to go to a House Committee hearing on the issue in April 14th. Thank you, Council President.
Seeing none, okay. Thank you very much. Next item is item, let's see, 3B. It's a bill for introduction. It's amending subsection B and adding sub...
Vice President, that one is delayed until 11 o'clock. That will be heard at 11 o'clock along with 3C.
Okay, 3B and C are for 11?
For 11.
Okay. Then, we'll move on to item 2. It's another resolution. Is that one also for 11? The 32nd Amendment to the annual appropriation? Well, we'll probably have to wait, because that's appropriating 28,000 to the Police Department, and...
I think we're on item 3D, Councilmember.
You're right.
That's Councilmember Brandal.
Yep, 3D.
Council Vice President Quintero, I'd like to postpone this till Friday, when we can continue this Thursday meeting, but, no, just kidding.
No, I'll be happy to postpone.
Yeah, no kidding. Let's see, you know what? Council, Council Vice President, I'd like to continue this item.
3D?
Yeah.
Okay. Tim, you're taking notes on everything, right? Keeping up with it? Good. Did you, you wanted to continue that to the next meeting, right?
I want to continue it to sometime in the future.
Okay, that was Councilmember Brand asking. Okay, it looks like the next item is scheduled for 1:30. Nobody from Police Department's here.
You can take unscheduled communication, if you like. You can take, you can take unscheduled communication, and then we can do closed session.
I don't want closed session. Is anybody here that would like to speak under unscheduled communication items?
Wow.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close it. Okay, we'll adjourn then to closed session. Thank you.
Council, in closed session, we have all of the listed bargaining units and unrepresented classifications. We should allow for public comment before going into closed session. We should ask for a public comment now.
Is there any public comment for closed session? Since we haven't had anything for anything else? Last chance? Okay, thank you. There's no comments.
This is an anomaly. This is the first time I've been the Council President, Act Team Council President since 2011. Only through Paul's sickness and Sal is in a event that I'll briefly be the Council President, so look out. And our item, first item, is item 2E, or 2D. This is the, more currents. The award of a contract of $132,000 for five years to Entrado Inc. for Beware browser-based software to extract information from public. Chief Dyer?
Yeah, thank you, Council. And sorry, wasn't, we weren't here this morning. I've never seen a council so efficient. So, you moved through some items before we were ready. But, anyway, I wanted to introduce this, this item, and it is for Council to award a contract in the amount of $132,000 over a five-year period for the entering into a sole-source agreement with Entrado, who makes the Beware product. And it is a browser-based software system that is utilized to extract information from both public and commercial sources or databases, and it is tied to addresses within our city pursuant to 911 calls that come in generally for either life-threatening or in-progress type incidents or crimes. And the funding source for that is going to be through a Homeland Security grant, and so there will be no impact on the general fund. I just wanted to touch a little bit. We, we had this item before Council, once before, and I know there were concerns raised about two features that were part of the Beware system. And I do have Michael Lee here from Entrado, so if any details need to be asked about that, he can provide those. But, there were two features that were of concern, and I know certain Councilmembers did come and look at the, the system. I know Councilmember Baines did as well as, I believe, Councilmember, Councilmember Brand. So, we have taken steps to do that. We've also had some community groups, mainly Faith and Community, that have come through. We've showed them the system. But, the two concerns were, number one, was a color-coding system that was a potential threat assessment for a particular location or individual had a particular address. And they used a algorithm in order to establish that potential threat level based on a number of factors, and it would either come up red, yellow, or green to alert the operator in the real-time crime center as to whether or not they needed to look further into that information. That feature has been disabled for the Fresno Police Department, and there are no longer any type of color-coding threat assessments. If an individual has a prior conviction for a criminal offense, it will be an asterisk by that individual's name. The second feature was the use of social media monitoring in order to determine that threat level. And what it would do is have a social media site that you could, operator could then access and see what the concern was. Again, that feature has been disabled for the Fresno Police Department. And pursuant to the request of the City Manager, he has asked us to put in the contract, which Entrado has agreed to, that should either one of those features be reactivated for the Fresno Police Department, it would immediately terminate the contract with the City of Fresno. So, those are the two features in there. I did want to just remind the Council that all of the information that is accessed in real time automatically by Beware is information that is readily available to members of the community, the media, to anyone. It is commercial records, it is public court records that are accessible to the public. The difference between what we currently, or what we used to do, when we would do the research into various databases such as LexisNexis, is this one automatically does it for us and provides that information to our real-time crime center operators. And I wanted to give you a couple of, one other feature that I think is important in how we used it here recently. But, whenever anyone calls the Police Department, and it's from a cellular phone, we will not have the location which they've called from, the exact location, because cell phones aren't tied to addresses. Landlines are. So, if we get a hang-up call, for example, under domestic violence, and it's from a cellular phone, we can then utilize, and we have been utilizing, the Beware system to tie that cellular phone to a particular address, so that officers can then respond to that location, especially when we call back and there's no answer on the cell phone. A recent use of the Beware system was a homicide that we had in our city, where a husband had killed a, his wife. He had left the location. We had information from a third party regarding this incident. Before officers ever arrived at the address where this murder occurred, they were able to determine who the suspect was by name, to determine the suspect's cellular phone, as well as the vehicle which he would be driving, so that that could be broadcast to all officers in the field, again, prior to the officer ever arriving on that call, which is critical information for that officer to have. So, that is the item that you have before you, is to approve the sole-source service contract, and also the appropriation through an AAR of the $28,000 into the department's FY-016 budget. And again, no, no impact on the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have a few cards here. I'll call your name. Bryson White?
Okay. Good morning, Council. You guys doing all right this morning? All right. Just a few, few comments. You know, Faith and Community, we've been in conversation with our Police Department regarding the need to return to community policing, and having conversations around Entrado and the Beware program, and lifting up the concerns that the community has with the Police Department's potential purchase of this, of this program. But, I think even bigger than just the concerns that we have is that this needs to be a public process in the sense of how, if the Council approves the purchasing of these funds, how it's going to, how this program will be held accountable, right? So, other cities have passed ordinances and had them in place that limited the ability for, for software monitoring to take place. So, for instance, in San Jose, when San Jose purchased a drone, both the Fire Department and the Police Department, there was an ordinance that was put in place that limited the ability for, for drone software to collect information. And so, I know in this particular program that Chief Dyer's putting forth, that it's not about drone software, but the question is, what is Council going to do to put forth an ordinance that actually holds how FPD is using their software, how they're holding FPD accountable in this process? This just can't just be a situation where the Fresno Police Department's able to have this software without oversight and without deep community input. The ACLU has put forth an ordinance that is pretty strong with its recommendations, and I would advise Council to, to reject the purchase of this software until there is an ordinance that is put in place that holds the Fresno Police Department accountable regarding how this software will be used. So, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Booker T. Lewis. Pastor Lewis?
29 minutes. Good morning. I'm Pastor Lewis, Rising Star Missionary Baptist Church. Faith and Community, greetings to all of the council persons and staff on the dais today. I just have a few statements here about the Police Department's request in item 2D. We're asking you today to not approve funding for additional surveillance software until we develop a comprehensive implementation process that includes community evaluation and approval, not just public comment. The second thing I want to say is that we are concerned about more than the bells and whistles of front-end software, but we are concerned that we all understand the backend algorithms and variables used by these programs to make conclusions that directly affect the lives of people in our community. And so, we had some experience in our conversations before with pieces of this software, where initially, there were, you know, you're working with the front-end of the program, but you really don't understand how they're coming to some of the conclusions, and there were some hashtags that were coupled with other hashtags that probably should not have been coupled with those hashtags, drawing, drawing conclusions that were skewed in some cases. So, today, we have an opportunity to take a major step toward true community policing by taking the time to build true community participation into our policy-building processes, further bringing the gap between community and police to a close. Our Police Department is asking us to trust them. Personalities and relationships aside, these kind of decisions call for community involvement and verification. The advancements of technology is pertinent to every area of society. In every case, the technological advance in society, in every area of technological advancement, we must remain servants to our, and accountable to the people that we serve. Last statement is this, please delay your approval of funding for additional surveillance, surveillance software until we thoughtfully develop a policy for implementation that includes community evaluation and approval, not just public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia Harris?
I am Letitia Harris. I am standing before you to ask that you delay the approval of this agenda item in the spirit of transparency and public perception. To be honest, the Police Department has a lot of equipment, as well as software, that they currently use. They even have equipment that is currently not even working. So, let's look at measures to improve that software and the current equipment that they have, so that we can maximize public safety, police safety, as well as public perception and transparency. In the event that you decide to move forward with this, we are asking that you employer, I implore you to establish parameters to hold the department accountable on how they will utilize the software. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Breedlove?
Reverend Chris Breedlove from Community United Church of Christ in Fresno, also board member of Faith and Community. Faith and Community is a collation, collaboration of about 20 churches in Fresno, working together for positive change in Fresno. I'd like to reiterate some of the things that have already been said, especially what Bryson said about we needing an ordinance in place to hold such software and technology and the Police Department accountable as they use that technology. There is a slippery slope of invasive technologies like the surveillance software that Chief Dyer is advocating for here today before the Council. Such technology infringes on the privacy of the general public and free speech, and so we need an ordinance to have checks and balances that's productive and healthy for the whole city. Also, too, it'd be wise to have an ordinance in place, because that would mitigate future possible litigation risk. And so, it's just physically conservative and smart to have such an ordinance in place. So, I realize that some of our, our members are up for election, various running, so these are the kind of things that the general public are looking at and concerned about. Progressive community activists are very concerned about this, as are we, Al. District 3 is very concerned about this, Oliver. And so, we trust... So again, the ordinance is key. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Hymanz?
Hello, my name is Katie Hymanz. I'm a resident in District 6, and I am very concerned about the way that this is happening and then the way that it's being pushed forward, and I would urge you to hold off until there is community input into this matter. I think to me that a big piece of this is really, there's already a lot of mistrust that exists between community members and the police department, and I think that this is just going to fuel that mistrust. And by pushing this forward and not having community input, it just furthers, it creates a spiral going of mistrust. I'm concerned that oftentimes with this technology, we don't actually know all that's, so much of technology is new, and we don't actually know what's going to happen with it. And I know that there have been other cities where they put it in place and think they have all the parameters that people won't be targeted, but then there's ways the technology works that we're not aware of. So I think that it's something that we really need to have an ordinance so that we can think through and have accountability measures in place to ensure that this is not continued to further breed mistrust within the community and work towards greater cohesion together. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Riggins?
in this process. We hear the term "community policing" coming on about quite a bit. The chief is talking about community policing, but how about some community involvement in how you do community policing? I think that that's very important, that the ordinance being put together and the community involvement in this process, because those of us who live in District 3 are generally the ones who are affected by this kind of software. So again, community involvement in this process is extremely important, and we are praying that the city council does not approve this until there is serious community involvement in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. J. Paul White?
And this is J. Paul White. Oh, no, it's okay. Had that for 41 years. Well, my experience with the software that Fresno PD is running, on January 27th, we went and met with Chief Dyer and his staff, and they actually ran my address, and a star popped up, because I am a former felon, so a star popped up. And then what stood out to me was my mother-in-law's third-removed ex-husband showed up as a family member. And I met this gentleman one time in my entire marriage to my wife. So what if something happens with that gentleman, and then they come to my house looking for me or looking for my wife in the process of looking for this gentleman? So for my wife and I, that causes us, you know, great concern, you know? And so the other issue that I'm having is, with 2/3 of the Fresno Police Department suffering from low morale, who is going to be at the helm of this powerful instrument? Who's going to be controlling this instrument? And so without public and community oversight, this can be potentially very dangerous. You know, I heard my council member, Steve Brandell, from District 2 on KMJ, and he had some very serious concerns about the program. And I ask you, have those concerns been alleviated? Did you figure out, you know, what the real algorithm is, and are you comfortable with this process and with this software? And that's just a huge concern in the community, because these things come about, and there's really no public discourse or no public dialogue, and then these things are implemented, and then what if something negative happens? Then we have to deal with that impact as well. So I urge the council to consider deep community input, and I also would like for us to be able to review the contract and then put it out for public review and public comment. Allow us to see the details of that contract. You know, my brother and I, we have an older brother who's an attorney, who's very interested in this process. And so I just encourage you to take some time and really consider what the community is saying before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Morris?
Good morning, assisting on? Members of the city council, my name is Rick Morris. I operate Medmark Clinic at 334 East Olive. And I've been active at a number of events recently, trying to collect some information, trying to figure out how I can promote safety in the community a little bit more. We could spend money year after year after year putting on extra officers. We could get a new satellite in the tower. We could do a number of things, but we cannot be protected if the officers are instructed not to protect us. Recently, Officer Ricardo Gonzalez was instructed in a division-wide meeting not to protect us, so even if we had the officers in the tower, even if they were sitting across the street, when we dialed 911, we were threatened with arrest because they said we were abusing the 911 system. Last night, Mr. Olivier said that somebody attacked him and his family, and they tried to kill them, and the police came out and downplayed it as a trespassing, and I understand that frustration. If nothing else, I can certainly relate to that experience. So you guys can vote on as many budget increases, you can vote on as many officers, put them in in the Tower District. Maybe we'll get a few good ones if you actually do that, but nothing's going to happen if the police are allowed to instruct their officers not to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in this item? If not, I'll bring you back to council. Councilmember Brandell?
Thank you, Assistant Vice President. I'd like to thank everybody for speaking that came up from the community. Pastor Lewis, are you, Pastor Lewis, could you come back up? I want to have a follow-up question with you. And Pastor Lewis, I'm not, I'm just picking you because you identified that you were with Faith and Community, and Chief said that Faith and Community met with Police Department on this issue. Were you at that meeting by any chance?
Absolutely.
You were there?
And there were several people here that were at the meeting.
And a bunch, yeah, because somebody else was also there. Chris, I think, was there. So my question is, did, were you not satisfied? I mean, obviously, the department would have shown you the different things, so it's not like they were completely blindsiding you. So you got to see some of the stuff. Did you leave dissatisfied, I guess is what I'm asking?
I think that, I think that we still have some concerns about moving forward. I think they're asking us, like I said in my statement, I'll repeat it, I'm sorry, I think that they are asking us to trust them, and I think that trust is good. I think you can build relationships with people and have trust, but I think when you're making decisions at this level, I think that you also have to verify. And so I think that there needs to be some kind of...
Trust, but verify. You're quoting Ronald Reagan right there.
Well, that's okay.
I love it.
That's okay. And so we have to, we, I tried to do it in a little slick way, but that's okay.
I saw that, but I caught it.
That's okay. So anyway, but I think that is very important. We did talk to them in that meeting about the need for community evaluation, true community involvement, feedback, and a process that really feeds into how they move forward as they, as they increase the technology element in the department. And so I think all of us have asked today that we really focus a little bit on how do we develop that true community feedback and address the concerns of the community as we start to buy software of this nature.
Okay.
Am I making sense?
No, totally, yeah, absolutely. And several other folks mirrored, said almost essentially the same thing, but I just wanted to make sure, I mean, because you identified from the Faith and Community aspect as well as Pastor Breedlove.
I think they, I think they spoke to what they could speak to in that moment.
Gotcha.
I think, I think that going forward though, so I used to, before I became full-time pastor, I worked in software development, and I understand the fact that people, when the internet first came out, we built front-ends onto old systems. The old systems were still working in the background. And so my point is, is that there are things going on in the background, program, have, they have algorithms, they have, they have variables that are embedded in the programs that we don't see out here and that we don't fully understand. And so not only do I want our police department to have that understanding, I want our council to have that understanding, and then I want our community to have that understanding so we really know what variables are being used to direct how we're policed in our community.
Yeah. Thank you, Pastor.
All right.
Yeah. You know, a number of folks essentially are in complete agreement with what Pastor Lewis just said. Bryson was our first speaker, and he talked about a process all the way up to J. Paul, who came up and lives in District 2, I believe, who said, "Take time and understand the process." When we first, when we first had this come before council, it was really interesting. Most of us were asking, most, more of asking questions, and it kind of, I don't know if it spun out of control, but before long, we had council members getting their profiles ran. And was some of that stuff completely expunged in the end, or?
There's still a little bit.
Okay, okay. But, you know, when I went to read the staff report, I didn't see a lot of those concerns addressed. Chief, you addressed them today. I mean, you stood right here and said that our big concerns were taken care of. Wasn't quite in the staff report that way. When, once the story hit the public, as J. Paul talked about, I was on talk radio several times, I believe other council members were as well, and we even got a national story, a national story, I can't remember which publication did it, but it was, The Washington Post was talking about the story in Fresno. So Chief, with, in my thought process, when a story goes that big and the public hears about it, and I think they need more time to digest what you're trying to get across rather than just come before council today and then us vote on it. So I agree with the folks that have spoken today. This is not something that I would never support. This is, this is not something I'd say, "I will never support this," but certainly I think the process with the, with the level that it got turned up in the beginning, we need a prerequisite level of public involvement to understand where we're at today and even understand the chief's answers. And so I know probably a lot of folks don't even know that we're facing this again. I think that we need some type of a community forum on this issue from people all across the city that are interested, all different types of concerns, to understand what our police department is actually requesting now compared to what they were requesting some months ago. So with all of that being said, I'm not going to support this today. I just can't. Not that I wouldn't ever, but I can't support it today. I need a more thorough process. One of the, one of the guys that actually first went to Councilman Baines and then came to me, is kind of a friend of mine, his name is Jordan, he's not even here today, and my guess is, he doesn't even know we're taking it back up today. Now, he did get to go interact with you guys, and he went through, he got, you guys did show him everything, so I appreciate that. So I know that you reached out to Jordan, but he represents a lot of other concerns that I think, I think our community just needs to know more about this. I don't know how that process would, would happen, but I would love to be included, and I think other council members would as well. So I'm actually going to make a motion to deny this opportunity, the staff report today.
Motion by Member Brandell, second by Member Olivier. Okay. Did you? Okay, I'm sorry. Second by Member Baines.
And I'm done, council.
Member Soria?
So I want to make a couple of comments, and then I do have a few questions. I echo some of the same concerns that were raised by the community, so I do want to thank them for being here. I recognize that with new times and technology, the advances of technology, the uses of, or high usage now of cell phones versus landlines, the need to look and explore at other software that will help our department in solving crimes and responding to crimes. So I understand that, but I do believe that the residents do, you know, raise some very valid concerns. I heard implicit biases, I heard the lack of maybe community involvement, I hear, you know, that we have a desire for community policing. That's something that I fully support, and I'm still, you know, trying to figure out how is it that we're, that our community really will get there. I do have a couple of questions, and you know, I've just, I haven't done much research into the software, but I did do a few Googles, and I found some kind of, I think, other articles that concern me because I read, "Massive 911 outage traced to a glitch at Colorado's Entrado software." You know, what, you know, have we looked at even some of the consequences of, have you seen, how effective is this, is this software? So Chief, I don't know if you could answer some of the questions that I have. Are other, obviously Colorado seems to be using it, but are there other municipalities here that we know that are using this technology? Some benefits, some, can you, can you speak to that?
Since we had a representative here from Entrado, perhaps he can speak to that, and then I would like to come back up at some point and share some thoughts.
Okay. And then, well, before you leave, I'll ask that question in a moment then. I know that you addressed the issue of, and I saw it on the, I think, not only on the service agreement or in the agreement between us and Entrado, but also on the staff report, where it does indicate that, let me read this.
Page 2, last paragraph, I think, second-to-last paragraph.
Yeah, that if the function, if these functions are activated, the contract will be terminated immediately, which I think is a concern that many folks have. The additional concern I think that I have within that, I think that that's great, but I think that for me, it's oversight and accountability. Who keeps a check to make sure that those functions aren't turned, turned on? Have we established?
I guess, I guess that can be determined by the council, can be determined by the manager.
Yeah.
We have a, we have an independent police auditor in this city, certainly could be the one that does that. I, on a, on a semi-annual basis, we have a retired federal judge that comes in and looks at all of our video policing systems. He could certainly be entrusted with that if that is a desire of the council.
I just think that those are some, maybe some of the things that need to be ironed out before the council takes a vote in approving such software.
We won't be coming to council on this item again for this funding this year. This funding runs out, we have a, the funding deadline for this through the Homeland Security Grant is in April, so we won't be coming back this year for this item. We will disable it this year. And second to that, you know, that feature will be gone, the Beware system, and without that funding, unless the city wants to come up with the annual fee after this grant runs out, but this grant will not be utilized for this purchase.
Can this grant be utilized for anything else aside from this?
Not at this point in time we've had it approved at the state level.
So if I could, councilmember, the reason the provision was included in the contract that enabling those two functions, if someone was to enable it, would it result in the immediate termination of the contract? The way, my thought was is that if someone was to call Entrado and say, "Listen, I want you on the QT to turn this on," Entrado would realize that by doing that, they would result in their, their contract being terminated. So why would they want to do that? Because they want to be able to provide this on an ongoing basis. The other thing I would ask for your, for your consideration is that the department has been using this, and we already have these two functions disabled. I'm pretty confident that Entrado will, because they're here, are hearing me loud and clear, that they are not going to at any time enable that, those two functions and so forth. Council's consideration, as we work through the process, and I have confidence we can do that. We've done this through video policing, as the chief indicated, we've got a protocol as to how video and data collected through video is collected, who's monitoring, who's overseeing the program, who's, who's, who's the checks and balances, that rather than... that rather than rejecting the department's request that a motion to at least amend, or amend the motion to at least allow an extension or a month-to-month not to exceed four months, to allow the program to continue to be utilized while we work through the protocols is how this software will be used in the future. Because the item for you right now is five years and what I'm suggesting is that we do a month-to-month extension of the pilot with the understanding that it's $38,000?
Twenty-eight thousand per year.
So we would pro-rate that, so that's $7,012, that's $2,500. So $10,000 or something like that. Not to exceed four months of $10,000 during the course of, while we go through the course of establishing a protocol.
Or I might also offer, if you approve the contract, we do not implement the system until we bring back guidelines that are agreed upon in terms of how it's used. We would not implement the actual system. We have it in place now as a test, but not the full system. So I guess when I walk away from her, I gotta have an understanding of what the direction is because we are currently utilizing the system as a beta site and a pilot and have for the last year.
Okay, can I call up the folks from Entrada?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Yes, good morning. So I have just a couple of questions. So one, just what other municipalities are using this system currently today?
Sure, there's quite a few, east coast to west coast.
Here in California?
Irvine, California is probably the closest one.
Okay. And you probably heard the comment that I made that, you know, I did some Googling and I found that some glitch caused the shutdown of the 911 system in Colorado and...
Yes ma'am, you have to understand who we are. So Entrada is a corporation, we've been in business for 35 years. We do nothing but 911 in public safety. We touch about 98% of all 911 calls at least once with our technology. So our technology is around the country and around the world, really. So you could find a news article from many different states, many different deployments, things like that. Those don't apply to this particular product.
Okay, so not to this particular product. Okay, perfect, thank you. Just, I guess, another question that I do have in terms of the data that you guys collect, or how the data is collected, I guess, to understand more of your program. Where is that data collected from the one-year trial period?
So, we don't actually collect or store any data. So there are many data houses around the country and they all collect data on all of us as US citizens, right? Anytime we order a pizza, anytime we do any kind of transaction out there, these data houses collect that information. It's all public data, there's no private data that's held or anything like that. It's all data that the Fresno Police Department has access to today. What we do is we go out and query those different databases very quickly and we bring it back into a format that the police can use to have more information and make a decision, right? So we're not making decisions, we're not making any kind of inference about any person or any address. We're simply bringing back data related to those data points and doing it very quickly so that the first responders, and it's not just the police department, it's the fire department, it's EMS. You have to remember our background, our background is 911. We created the solution so that first responders can get to emergencies quicker and find the right person when they're there. All of the discussion today seems to be focused around community policing and things like this, but most of the stories we have out of the different jurisdictions that use Beware now are really around first responders finding people who are in need. Great stories coming out. We had a situation where a nine-year-old called 911. Single mother at home, she's unconscious. The 911 operator said, "Where do you live?" He said, "I don't know." Push the Beware button, they have the address associated with that cellphone. So they know where to go. We had a situation on the east coast in Florida where a gentleman dialed 911. He had a Philadelphia phone number. The line was open, but there was no one responsive on the other side. We could not get the exact location of the phone because he was inside a high-rise apartment. So the jurisdiction ran their Beware query. They saw the individual, they saw the family members associated with him. They saw that his daughter had a Tampa address. And that Tampa address was associated in the same cellular tower sector that the call was coming from. So dispatch an officer, they got the apartment manager to open the door. The father was on the ground having a heart attack with his cellphone laying there connected to 911. They would have never found him otherwise. So these are the applications for this kind of technology.
Well, those seem like good applications, but you know, given the fact that you have all this data available, who knows how that data is being utilized aside from in those instances, right? If people have access to all this data and how they, you know, bring an analysis to it, I guess I wouldn't know. Question, in terms of how the data is gathered, is that data for the last one year? How many years?
It's whatever the commercial data houses have on record, okay? So it's whatever they have accumulated is what we go in and get. We do not set a limit on the number of years the data can go back. But these commercial data houses make their revenues by keeping current and accurate data and always striving to keep the best data that they can get. And we're a very small segment in using this for public safety. These guys are the people that sell to the insurance companies and the roofing companies and all these other companies out there that use our public data as Americans to market to us and things like that. We're taking the data, and again, Fresno PD has access to all of this data. It would just take them hours to weeks to pull it together. What we do is very quickly bring it to them in a format they can understand and they can use to save somebody's life in a very short period of time. That's what we do. We're not doing anything special as far as going out and getting into databases that the public doesn't have access to. Any one of you could find any amount of this information on anybody that you want to run. All you have to do is go on Google and get one of these search people and pay them X dollars to go find you the exact same information.
So you said earlier that this data is not stored? Is that what you...
We don't have a big database with all this information stored in it. When they run a query, we go out to the different databases and we gather all the data and we bring that back for them.
So for our purposes here in the city of Fresno, did, you know how we were running kind of, I guess, the test or the pilot? Is this, are we storing any of the data that we're getting? How are you guys...
No, I think, for lack of a better term, what Entrada is, is a search engine.
Very close, yes. That's a simple explanation.
It's a different version of Google.
So we just always have access to the information out there?
That's right, that's exactly right.
But it's, so it's, I guess I'm wondering, where is it coming from? Is it from, where is it stored?
It's stored in all these different data companies that store all this data. So you know, networks have evolved where they're very quick. Computing now is very quick. When Fresno PD or Fresno Fire, whoever needs this information to find some information about a 911 caller, you know, we go out and we query these many different databases. We compile all that data and bring it back and present it to them so that they can make a decision, how's the best way to render aid?
Are we also using this for Fire? Or is this just all PD?
I think right now it's PD, it's a pilot program. So no, I don't believe it's being used for Fire. But potentially it could be, but again, I've heard concerns about some of the functionality, which we've taken steps to disable when we first received feedback from the community. No, it's not being used for Fire at this time.
Okay, well, those are all the questions that I have, thank you so much.
Thank you. If I could say one more thing, is that we did change the contract for the city. We did take the inputs from the city. We disabled all the features that were objectionable. And so now you have a solution that is compliant with what you were requesting.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Member Olivier?
Can you come back? I have a few questions for you. Yeah, will you tell me your name again?
Michael Lee.
Alright, Mr. Lee, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had a few questions that I had written down and then I wrote down a few more, listening to my council colleagues.
Sure.
First of all, you should probably know that I'm the council member who they ran my address and I came up as a yellow because there was someone who once lived at my address that had a criminal record or something. And so that concerned me very greatly because, you know, I think that someone brought this up, but as officers are rolling up to respond to my home, I come up as a yellow. So if I'm a victim and I come out of my home, you know, how will that situation be handled? How will officers be trained to treat me when I'm the victim? I'm coming out of a yellow house where the guy hasn't lived there in forever. So I'm glad to hear that the color code is gone. What has it been replaced by? Is it, instead of a yellow cube on the screen, is it convicted felon once lived here? I mean, what has the yellow cube been replaced by in the system? Because I mean, if the purpose of Beware is to notify dispatchers so they can notify first responders, how big of an integral element has been lost now that the color code is gone? So doesn't that mean that if the color code is gone, that the program is no longer useful?
Oh no, not at all. The color coding really worked in, at that time, in green, yellow, and red, right? Green meant, there's nothing found on this, you know, anyone living there. Yellow was, there's something in your Facebook page or your LinkedIn page or YouTube, something like that, associated with you that led to the FBI keywords.
We were told that that social media was not used in our test program.
If you came back yellow, then...
I came back yellow because I was told that there was someone who once lived at my home. I was, we were, as council members, we were understanding that the social media was not being used in the test. Are you saying that social media was being used in the pilot program?
I can tell you, in the early days, we first turned it on, yes, absolutely. The web crawlers were enabled to look, but they're not now. That's all been taken out.
How long of the pilot program were the web crawlers used?
I don't have the dates, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's two different things. Whether or not social media was used to calculate a color code, red, yellow, green, that is true, that was in the pilot system. The question asked of us is, have we used the social media part of it, which would be that we saw something in there that caused us to access social media? And the answer was no. But their feature has always been, continues to be, but not with us, where their threat assessment level, red, yellow, green, well, it would never get to red because it was built in to only go to a yellow based on social media. That was in their system. But we never accessed the social media site to see what that was. That's the difference. It doesn't tell you what it is, it just says, "Here's a site." If in fact, social media played a role in the color code assessment threat level.
Thank you, Chief. And now that the color code assessment is gone...
And the social media site is gone.
Okay, what appears with our dispatchers in its place?
If a person...
Is there a text?
If a person has a...
This person could be a dangerous person.
No, it says, "If a person in there has a criminal conviction," there's an asterisk by it, just like it would in our records management system if we had an individual who was arrested. We would know that in our records management system, which we do not need the permission of the council to utilize. We have that, right? And every law enforcement agency has it. And we also have access to all the court records to know who's convicted, just like you do. What is in there now is if there is an asterisk on a person who has a past conviction and then it tells you what that conviction is. Pretty simple, police records, that's exactly what it is. The other features though, are the cellphones and the associates and addresses of associates that we did not have access to before. Now, we can, we can still do this, but it will take us an hour to access LexisNexis and a number of the other databases that they are accessing for us in real time. So it's not the source of information that we can access legally, it's the time that it takes to do it very quickly. Just like you can go and do a Google search, this is the equivalent of a Google search in those databases that are useful to law enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I have another question for you. I don't want anyone to die in this city because a child has a parent at the bottom of a swimming pool or a grandparent that's maybe had a stroke and the child calls on a cellphone, 911, and is unable to identify the address. Is that occurring right now in our community? Are people, are our citizens dying because we cannot identify the locus and the origin of a cellphone call? I don't know if that's for you or for the chief. I mean, because that concerns me very greatly.
I can let the chief speak to local infrastructure. I can tell you, I mean, I'm a quasi-expert in 911 technology. I can tell you how it works.
Particularly in the city of Fresno, are we able right now? Do we have the capability to roll to the source of a cellphone call of someone who is young or aged and doesn't know where they are?
You have the ability in Fresno to do what anybody else in America can do as far as finding location accuracy of a 911 caller. If it's a wireline call, right, very accurate. Entrada's maintained those databases for two-plus decades. We know exactly where that call's coming from. If it is a wireless call, the world changes. Wireless calls are affected by where they are when they call. If they're standing in the middle of an open field, we can get the GPS off the phone or triangulate their location very easily.
And we do that today.
You do that today. If they're in an apartment building though, or they're inside, challenges occur, okay? Especially in apartment buildings. You don't get GPS signals inside a building. So if you're near a window, yeah, we'll get GPS. If you're in the middle of a building, we're not going to get GPS and know where you are. We're going to know approximately where you are.
Do you offer a product to municipalities that would be able to do that without having to purchase Beware?
Beware's your best chance of getting more data to find where they are.
We can't just get a discount or a cut rate to take out the locate distressed person and pay for that and not have to purchase Beware?
No, sir, it's one product. However the institution wants to use it, it's one data set. How you use it is your prerogative. We find it's useful across all different types of public safety agencies, whether it's Fire, Police, or EMS. The data is valuable to everyone because you don't know when that call comes in, if they need a cop or if they need a fireman or if they need a paramedic. And so that's your best chance. And as far as, you know, ripping pieces out and things like that, you know, we've done everything we can do to accommodate the concerns here in Fresno. We haven't charged for any of that, we haven't changed our pricing or anything like that. And we've been a very good friend, we think, to Fresno with the pilot we've been going on.
What, who in our city will be administering this program? I mean, is there going to be someone that sits and... I'm very technologically ignorant. Is there somebody that pulls the levers and runs this thing? Or is that something that you do?
So Fresno PD has actually done a beautiful job technically of integrating it. So when they get a 911 call that comes in and their dispatcher, so this is the person that dispatches Police, Fire, EMS, determines this is a life-threatening call. And we call that a one or a zero in the dispatch system. Then they have built an interface into ours where they automatically go out and retrieve the Beware data. They may not use it, but they've got it on hand. They've already done that integration. And if they can't get the help they need, the information they need... help they need, the information they need, they've got it at their fingertips to say, okay, I'm not getting a response from this person. What other data can I look at to try and affect the appropriate response? And they're only looking at life-threatening incidents.
In, in other cities like Irvine, do they have a commissioner or some bureaucrat that oversees the program as, as a watchdog, or?
No, there's no really watchdogs on any of this. It's really the agency that purchases the solution and uses it. It's whatever falls in their normal protocols. I believe the chief talked about having an internal watchdog agent at PD that was in charge of making sure everybody followed the rules. And as the, the city manager was clear to point out, we're certainly not going to break the contract that you guys have negotiated with us. It says we can never turn on social media, and we can never turn on color coding.
Have, well, is, is this, is, would you, what other benefits does Beware offer our department? If, if you're, I understand that your algorithm and the whole thing of Beware is proprietary and it's secret, you guys guard it, you, it's, it's what you're marketing this product on.
Sure.
So with, without the color code and without the social media, what's left? Just that location service? I mean, what, what does Beware offer us when, when its teeth have been taken out by, by this organization?
You have been taking the teeth out of Beware. You've taken out ancillary benefits.
So what are the, what do you offer without the-
We offer the data, the pure data in a very quick time and in a very consistent format. So the first responders can make the right decision when they're trying to help somebody. That's, that's the bottom line on the deal. The data is what is key. The data is what's kept up to date in the market. The data is what we present very quickly. Because if the first responders had to go get this data, it could be an hour to a week before they could compile it all. We can do it in less than a minute. And that's the difference in saving somebody's life and not saving somebody's life.
Where has Beware been used before?
Colorado, Pennsylvania, Florida, California. I mean, it's-
Have, 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 have there been lawsuits? Have you, so Beware's been around for how long?
Several years.
Several years, and Entrada's never been sued for?
Not, not for the use of Beware data, no.
It has, so, so some of these other locations actually left the color coding in.
Yes.
So they're using that.
Yeah.
Has, has, has your system ever led to a, an injury or, or a death? And that in, in terms of officer safety and also community safety, has, has the program ever, in, in your knowledge, led to a, an injury or death because it was, it was misunderstood or misused?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But on the other side, it has led to diffusing some situations that were potentially very explosive. You know, the most dangerous call for an officer to go to is domestic violence. And there was a case where we got a, a domestic violence call that it claimed it on a landline phone. And the young lady said, my boyfriend has barricaded the door, he has a gun, and I'm afraid for my child and myself. And then the line went dead. 911 called back, no answer. 911 called back, no answer. Officers are en route because we know the address of, of the wireline 911 call. But they ran Beware while the officer's en route. And they saw the boyfriend's name because he was associated with that address, and his cellphone number and things like that. So before the police pulled up in front of the residence, they called the man's cellphone number. And he answered his cellphone. And his first question, of course, was, how'd you get this number? And I said, well, it's not important. This is Sergeant so-and-so with the police department. Let's talk about what's going on. And they had a nice conversation, and the guy ended up removing the couch from the front door and walking outside to talk to the officers. So that was in these domestic violence situations, you know, tensions are high, emotions are high, people aren't thinking logically. And those are very, very dangerous situations for the police officers to respond to. This is a case where that was diffused because they had the man's cellphone number, and they would have never had his cellphone number otherwise.
Can you share with the council any times that Beware has failed?
I don't know it's ever failed. Now, Beware doesn't always bring back data 100% of the time. Beware only brings back the data that is available in the commercial marketplace.
And my final question for you is, what, what kinds of ordinances do cities put in place to, to constrain Beware? What-
We've never had a municipality put a special ordinance in place to constrain Beware.
Or to govern its operation?
Or to govern its operation. Honestly, it's just not that big of a threat. It is the same data you've already authorized your first responders to have today. We're just in very inexpensively and quickly giving them the same data they could go out and access so they can make the right decisions when they're going into whatever situation it is.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Member Baines?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think you, you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
I think my colleagues have covered, covered all of the questions that I might have. I'll just make a few brief remarks and see where, move on to a vote. You know, I think the, my colleagues have basically shared the same concerns I have. The community has shared a lot of the same concerns I have. I think for me, the, the biggest thing would have been, you know, I actually called for the workshop last year, I think it was, because a constituent of mine came in my office and was very concerned. Steve's friend, actually. And had seen an ABC 30 news report, was concerned that the use of the social media aspect of Beware could somehow provide erroneous information to an officer responding to a, a location. We, based off of that, he wanted to find out what his own personal profile would be. And of course, because the software is proprietary, he could not have his own information run to find out where he, where he was. He was concerned about social media, social media posts that he made that could be taken out of context, considered inflammatory. So we did a workshop on this item last year on my request to really get more background because quite frankly, I hadn't heard much about it. And the workshop, as Councilmember Olivier alluded to earlier in his comments, revealed something very interesting. It's that even he was registered as a person that we should be cautious of. Yeah. Now, listen, I'm already cautious of you, but, you know, an officer, you know, rolls into your house, I don't know if, if that would have been completely justified. So of course, we asked for those elements in the Beware software to be taken out. And it looks like that they, certainly were, as the chief mentioned earlier. I think what my concern is, is that we, we really did not do enough community outreach and follow up with us. I was unaware of that we were coming back and to council until it appeared on the agenda. Glad that there was some discussions with the community and some dialogue. But I don't remember your name, sir, but you, you did a lot of testimony. I appreciate it. But I don't want to, I'm going to disagree with you slightly on minimizing the use of the software. It, it is significant. We are entering into a new age of technology and a new age of policing, and we need to be very conscious of these things. And the community has made it very clear, the council has made it very clear that it's not minimal. So we don't want to treat it like that. We want to make sure that we all understand how this works and how the software will be applied. Pastor Lewis did some, I know he did it really quickly, but he talked about just the back, the backsides or whatever, front, front doors and back doors of, of these programs. And I'm not a software programmer, but I understand the hesitancy to move quickly into something without understanding all the ramifications. So for those reasons is why I won't be able to be supportive today. I, I think that the application potentially really has a lot of great benefits for law enforcement. I certainly can, can see them when I read the report, when, when I saw the, saw it evidenced in the Real Time Crime Center. Definitely a, a very good, a very good product. I think that we just need to do a better job of communicating this to the public. A lot was made out of this workshop that we did. And I agree with Councilmember Brandal wholeheartedly that potentially some community meetings, some community dialogue should have been incorporated into this item before it came back before us today. You know, not to say that we can't support something like this because clearly there's a, a valid use for it in law enforcement applications. But we've got to incorporate the community into these discussions a little bit better. So those are my comments, Colley, Council. Thank you. Council Assistant, Assistant Vice President, Brand. And I think you all really said everything that I had to say. And I didn't want to repeat a bunch of stuff, but just give, give my, give my, my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Baines. The, the screen is clear. I've said that in about five years. You know, information can be very enlightening or can be potentially very dangerous. I think there's a lot of potential good in this software that could save lives. The community response was very visceral. I can see that there's a major concern. And with a deadline, I guess, of April, there's not too many options. I'd like to see an opportunity to engage the community and find a way to answer the concerns and possibly in the future, implement something like this. But Chief, Chief Dyer, is there, with a deadline of April, is there any way to re-engage this idea?
Not, not with the use of Homeland Security funds. That $28,000 that have been set aside, that will simply go, go back to the state. And that's fine. In terms of community involvement, you know, I've, I've utilized the chief's advisory board, who represents various segments of this community, Sikh community, Islamic community. I've had all of those individuals through the Real Time Crime Center, shared with them all of the issues, gotten feedback from them. I, I took the Faith and Community group through the Real Time Crime Center. I've utilized the media on probably a dozen times to show them the system, and they've communicated that to the public. We've had members of the community come through the Real Time Crime Center. We've had members of this council come through the Real Time Crime Center. I, what I need to know is what, what other, we had a workshop, a public workshop here on Beware. So I guess I need to know, what would the council like me to do? And what community, what community are we talking about out of the half a million people? Is there, does each council want to designate some people that we will work with to develop guidelines? I just need to get some clarity so that when we come back, I'll, I'll have a better understanding of that. And this is no different, I want you to know, than when we implemented the video policing program in, in the city of Fresno. We went through a similar process, and we vetted it, and we developed guidelines. And there was a lot of concerns about video policing being used in our city. And today, I get calls weekly, as we saw at the Tower District the other night, people asking for more cameras in their neighborhood. The very thing that people did not want in the past, our people are clamoring for it today. And so I know this technology is an incredible tool for law enforcement. It is going to save lives. It is going to help officers do their job more safely. It's going to help citizens do their, or us to respond to those citizens more safely. And I, I hate to see an extremely valuable tool be lost in law enforcement because of a lack of understanding, awareness, or whatever. So I just implore the council to reconsider this, or at least pass the contract and wait for implementation until we have guidelines in place. I'm okay with that. Or if we come back at a later date, then we have to identify another funding source in order to purchase this, this system. So in either case, I'm, I'm open to that. And I just need to know what the, the council prerogative is.
Thank you, Chief. I think the, there's tremendous potential here. I think we have the responsibility to find a way to engage the community and come back. I do believe if it's done right, it will save lives. It'll make the lives of everybody in the city a little bit safer. But there's obviously a lot of mistrust out there right now that we have to deal with. So I don't know if any council member would like to-
Yeah, I punched in.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Brandal?
Yeah, Chief. So to answer your question, I know for me, immediately after that first workshop that Councilman Baines called for, I ended up on radio and both KMJ and Power Talk. And I think, I think I'd like to see you go on radio and, you know, talk to the community that's heard about it. So they've heard, in other words, now they've heard one half of the argument, and they, they need to hear, you know, this is how I've addressed it, that type of thing. So there's, there's thousands of people. I think it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt for the city of Fresno to publish something in the Fresno Bee, or to meet with the Fresno Bee's editorial staff and let them cover the changes that you've implemented since that workshop. But, and so those are two, those are two groups of outreach above and beyond the Faith and Communities style approach where you're dealing with just individuals. But I think we probably need a big workshop, you know, in my opinion, we probably should have had a workshop leading up to this vote where you showed council that, you know, here's the things that I've changed from the concerns that you had, and then let the community see it, engage, talk it out. I appreciate Faith and Communities you have in them down there. But, you know, it's just, some community members are not quite as organized as Faith and Communities, and maybe they just hear about these things on the radio, they have concerns. I think, I think we could have done a very expanded effort, especially after what happened the first time. When the story went national, we probably should have responded in light manner and gone with, you know, a, a print out in the Fresno Bee and some stuff on radio. And I think-
But by the way-
That's the type of thing we-
By the way, I did a story with the Fresno Bee. I went on Power Talk, I went on KMJ, and I went on NPR. And Sergeant Castro went on those radio stations as well with me.
Back then, though, right?
Yes. Since we've disabled the features.
Okay. And I remember when you were on-
And Sergeant Castro's been on there.
Yeah.
The public is well aware of the disabled features. It was in the Fresno Bee, it was in the Washington Post even, all of those features that have been disabled. So I, I've done, I've taken those steps. I'm just trying to figure out what additional steps you would like us to do to engage the community and develop guidelines. Otherwise, I, I'm fearful that I'm going to be back up here again and, and not, not, not have an item. I'm not sure why I need to bring this item back without clear direction as to what engagement, specific engagement you would like from me with the community and what groups. I've already, I've, I am working with Faith and Community right now. We've delayed pursuing any type of social media monitoring system until we come up with guidelines on that with, with the community. I guess I can do the same with this. I just, I want to make sure that I know who the community is in this half a million population because Faith and Community represents a small segment. I just need to know who you guys would like me to involve in this process that you, it would raise your comfort level. So if you can tell me who those people are in the community, I'd be more than happy to bring them in and, and sit down and have conversations with them.
And may I suggest, if that's what we're going to do, if council would host through your district meetings, an opportunity for this, this software to be presented to your, your constituents within your district, then that would be helpful because then you, we will be able to get a, a better idea of what the community's thoughts are behind the use of this kind of software. Because again, as the chief pointed out, I heard a lot of concerns about the use of video cameras. And now we're sitting here and asking, and folks are asking us to deploy video cameras at every street corner that we possibly deploy them. And, and we have had successes with the use of video cameras. This is essentially a search engine. No different, as I shared, with, with Google or anything else. And it is information that is available in the public domain. But with that, we also understand the need to reach out and meet with the community to get their feedback and develop some protocols to address the concerns they have with the use of this technology. We're willing to do that. All I would ask is rather than requiring the chief to figure out who he needs to meet with, that you support us or help us in meeting with your constituents, in identifying, in providing the information, objective information as how this tool is used, because then that would help us craft whatever protocols that we need to craft in order to move this item forward, or not move it forward.
Thank you. Chief, one other quick question while you're up here. Would you remind me, what is the savings to the department if we were to purchase the program today as you're requesting?
Twenty-eight thousand, the, the, the program itself is costing us $28,000 per year. The Homeland Security grant that we have that runs out next month is for $28,000 funded this year. So that's, that's the cost, $28,000 this year.
So what you're essentially telling council is, if we act today- So what you're essentially telling council is if we act today, we'll save 28 grand?
If you approve the contract today, we'll be able to take advantage of the $28,000 funding from Homeland Security. Yes.
Yes. But you could come back to us three weeks from now or a month or six weeks from now probably and with the same item and we, it will have cost us $28,000 to postpone.
Right. If I come back in four weeks, well, I won't come back in four weeks because I won't have a funding source, is what I'm telling you. I won't be back to council with this item because we don't have a funding source for it. So that's one I said I won't be back to council with.
You don't have 28,000?
Correct. But if I, if we came up with a funding source, then yeah, we, I'd be back in whatever period of time.
Okay. Interesting. Um, so here...
I've got a question for you. Um, 28 grand. We're not going to have a problem with that. All right.
All right, Chief. Um, so here's the, in my, my thought as the person who made the motion not to, not to go forward today, I'm going to stick with that, but, um, here's, here's the way I'm looking at this now. There are two major concerns here. One is proper policing, which we all want. One is community awareness and community transparency, which we all want. For 28,000 right now, when this, you know, in a budget of a billion dollars, I think the one about the public transparency and the community involvement currently is outweighing the other one. Okay? So, I'm committed to, to your department and I think all of council is. So I'm very open, I'm very open to what you're saying today to council, that you need this tool. But right now, in my opinion, that's being outweighed by the community's need to hear more about that and to be included and involved. So if it was 28 million, might be a different story. But at 28,000 level, I think we've got to stick with the community and let them kind of get up to speed with where you're at. And so I hope that you can bring it back to us. I think we can find 28 grand. And, um, if, you know, if that's the case. But I, I do definitely think that we need the community effort on this one. And, and I know that you went on radio when we had the workshop, um, you know, right in that timeframe where it was kind of a buzz. That was a couple, couple of months ago, but now I think we need to go back and you need to say, hey, hey, I went before council. They wanted me to clear some of this up. So our whole city is aware of what Fresno Police Department's requesting now. It's completely different than what we were looking at two or three months ago. So that's my thought on it. I don't know if other council members have any.
Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, and I'll just, Steve kind of made, made a similar point. I, I wanted to, I think those efforts would have been great. I think what probably would have...
They would be great or they would have been?
I said that I think those efforts would have been great. Um, I think the other thing that I would add to that, uh, what I would have probably preferred was a follow-up workshop or where we can see what the changes look like. So the good thing about the first workshop is when we were here, we got a demonstration, um, which obviously didn't go like we wanted it to go. Uh, but I think a follow-up for us as being the representatives of the city. So, you know, the, we represent the entire community. All seven of us together represent the entire community. And it would have been good for us to have seen, okay, these were the changes you all asked for. We want to bring this back. Uh, here's what they look like. Uh, we didn't, so that would have been what I think would have been, made this process better for me. Um, and lastly, I just want to say really briefly that, um, I don't want to conflate the issue that the community is not supportive of this technology or council isn't supportive of the technology. I, I don't want to, I want to be very clear. I didn't hear a community member say they don't support this. Now, I do remember video policing and people were like, I don't want that. I don't want any cameras up. I'm not hearing this. What I'm hearing is we need some more clarity. We need more comfort. And our jobs as public servants are to give them that. Uh, we don't ever want to get too far ahead of the comfort of the people that we represent. And I think that's what I'm hearing. My colleagues say that's certainly a high feel. And that's what I heard the, the community say. Not that they don't believe it's a valuable tool. I think all of us agree with that. We know that it's going to save lives. I, I get it. Um, but we need to make sure that we are bringing our community along, you know, with us on these issues.
By the way, as a police chief for the last 15 years and being a department last 37 years.
Yeah.
I fully understand the importance of community and the value of community.
No, no.
Been well engaged in community policing for many years, uh, Councilmember Baines.
Yeah.
And I think you know that and appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'm willing to go ahead and further that in this capacity. That's the purpose of the Chiefs Advisory Board, which each of you council members have the ability to appoint a member to.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, was out the Tower District the other night.
I just wanted to respond. I just wanted to respond because you asked for, you know...
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. And so I'm giving, yeah, give me your feedback. Um, and so those are the things I think that we'll do next time, that we can do better. I think we're supportive and I want to make sure that we all understand that. Uh, so I think that we have some recommendations, Chief. Uh, I think the community has provided input and so has the council.
Can I ask the council?
Um, and I just want to add to just some of the comments in terms of, I guess, giving a little bit more direction. What would be important for me, and I think that it was expressed by a number of the community members, is, um, to bring a policy in place. If that's an ordinance, we need to, um, look at what we, um, can put in place to create those safeguards that would make the community a little bit more comfortable. I know that with the video, I think, um, our city attorney mentioned that we did, um, or we do have an ordinance. Is that correct?
We have an ordinance concerning, uh, video policing, yes.
Yes. So I think similarly, um, so that there's comfort and that we include the community in the process of creating this ordinance. So that's something that I would like to, um, see included as we bring this, um, forward. Thank you.
So with that, can I get a commitment from the council that, that you will work with us to schedule community meetings within each of your districts over the next 60 days so that we can come back, uh, with that and the workshop will include the, the, the input that we received. That would help us in craft potentially a, a policy or a series of protocols. So if you can commit to us that you will help coordinate those community meetings so that we can come back within 60 days with this item, that would be greatly appreciated. Help us provide some focus on what we tried, what we need to do.
I will for sure.
I love community meetings.
Okay. Um, I guess there's no need for an amendment. I mean, the, it's clear, the, the mood of the council is to try to find a way to implement this technology and, uh, and, uh, work with the community. So I don't know if there's a timeline or just...
Well, let me ask you. So then over the next 60 days, council's direction is for the department to, to terminate the use of this software.
Repeat that, Bruce?
Well, by not approving this item, what you're essentially telling the department, and what I'm hearing is you want them to terminate the use of this software until which time an agreement is reached and a protocol, a series of protocols or a policy has been established.
I don't think that's part of the, uh, motion, is it?
Well, I think it's essentially what Bruce is saying. It's a consequence.
Which goes back to if you at least at a minimum agree to a month to month, not to exceed 60 days, which at $2,333 equates to about, you know, I, I'm not nearly as worried, like you, I'm not worried about the grant and finding $28,000. What I just want to know is that the department's been using this for a year. They've made adjustments based on the input from the community. I absolutely understand why we need additional input in order to establish a policy. But would you at least give us the authority to, to enter into a month to month, not to exceed 60 days, uh, in order for the department to continue to use this software until which time we come back and resolve this one way or another?
Lee, who's up? I just punched up.
Member Olivier?
Uh, thank you, City Manager Rudd. Um, the officer safety obviously is of paramount importance to me. The safety of the people in our community is of paramount importance to me, but I cannot condone the continued use of this program and I'll be opposing that.
Okay. Member Brandal, do you want to leave your motion the same?
I want to leave the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion.
And, you know, that will add a little bit of fire to get this thing moving and, and go out and take the community serious and get with it and we can all be a part of it.
Is somebody going to take the lead on this? City Manager?
What's the motion? Can we hear the, can I hear the motion?
Motion is to deny the, the staff recommendation.
I think you guys know the motion was to...
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Major passes 5-0 with members Caprillo and Hintero absent. Do we want to go on to the next item that's actually related or take lunch? Lunch? Okay. We'll take a, a lunch break and be back at 1:30. Sorry you had some of these people to wait so long on your items.
I didn't use the public state benefits. Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the Fresno City Council back to order. And, uh, this part of the council meeting, we start with our ceremonial presentations. And, uh, the first one that we'd like, uh, to, uh, proclaim is, uh, proclamation recognizing Brigadier General Robert F. Titus and the sponsors, the mayor's office and council president, Capriolo. Mayor?
All right. Thank you so much, Acting Council President. And, uh, good afternoon to everyone and welcome to City Council here in the city of Fresno. We have some very distinguished guests with us here today and, uh, we're so pleased to be able to join in honoring them. And, uh, I'd actually like to ask Colonel Garrison, General Garrison, pardon me if I'm not getting the titles right, to come on up as well as our special guest. And, uh, we're going to properly introduce the Brigadier General and learn about the history and his impact on our nation. Um, and, uh, he's here to speak to the 144th, uh, later today and this week. And so we're so happy you could stop by and join us here in the city of Fresno. We have a special presentation we want to make to you. So here you go.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, really thank you for, uh, this proclamation and, uh, honoring General Titus. The reason why General Titus is here is every year we have a, a heritage event at the base where we bring in a distinguished, uh, hero, an Air Force veteran and an Air Force hero to talk to our airmen. Because despite the fact that the technologies change and the things that we use to do our job change all through time, there's one constant and it's the airmen and it's the values that we use and the values that we apply to our job. So this year, we're proud to have, uh, Brigadier General, Earthquake Titus here. Air Force Cross winner, Silver Star, four DFCs, over 400 combat missions in Korea and Vietnam, three MiG kills, test pilot in the 50s, uh, flew with Chuck Yeager, Bob Hoover, uh, Bud Anderson, the list, very, just very distinguished. And we have several of his distinguished fellow aviators that flew with him in Vietnam here as well. Fire Can Dan. We've got Bill Hosmer, Pete Carpenter and I, Steve Dwelly.
So we can recognize you as well. Thank you.
There's, how many X Thunderbirds in that group?
Two, only two.
Only two Thunderbirds, but a lot of F-100 pilots, all combat veterans. Uh, this, this means a lot to our airmen because like I say, the values don't change. And so General Titus is here to communicate those values to our airmen and connect the modern day airmen to their past. So very grateful he's here and grateful to the city to recognize him.
It is a, a very small token, but we hope you will receive it well. Uh, we wanted to name the day after you. So, um, so we are going to give you this special presentation and I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if you would please read the item into the record and we will present this to you.
Whereas General Titus was born in 1926 in Orange, New Jersey. He attended secondary schools in Maryland and Virginia and studied mining engineering at Virginia Polytech Institute. And whereas General Titus served on active duty in enlisted status from January 1945 to August 1946 as a squad leader with 82nd Airborne Division. He was commissioned as a second lieutenant in the US Air Force in September 1949. And whereas during the Korean War, General Titus flew 101 combat missions in F-51 and F-86 aircraft as a flight commander and assistant operations officer. And whereas in 19, in March 1954, General Titus transferred to Edwards Air Force Base, California for test pilot training and aircraft development. In 1959, General Titus flew one of the two F-100s that made the first flight of a single engine jet fighters across the North Pole, an accomplishment for which he was awarded the Distinguished Flying Cross. And whereas after completing graduate school at the University of Chicago, under the Air Force Institute of Technology Program, General Titus served three years in Europe and was then assigned to Headquarters Tactical Air Command at Langley Air Force Base, Virginia. And whereas in May 1966, General Titus went to the Republic of Vietnam where he assumed command of the Skoshe Tigers, the only F-5 squadron in the US Air Force. And in January 1967, he became commander of the 389th Tactical Fighter Squadron. He flew 400 combat missions in North and South Vietnam and destroyed three MiG 2, 2-1s in an aerial combat. And whereas in September 1967, General Titus was assigned to Headquarters US Air Force where he was project officer for the F-15 in chief to the Advanced Tactical Systems. After attending the National War College, General Titus went to McDrill Air Force Base, Florida as vice commander of the 15th Tactical Fighter Wing and later became commander. And whereas in May 1971, General Titus was transferred to Okinawa and assumed the command of the 18th Tactical Fighter Wing of the Pacific Air Force at Cadena Air Force Base. After being promoted to Brigadier, Brigadier General in 1972, he next commanded the 30, 313th Air Division. And whereas General Titus went to serve in senior staff positions in Air Force System Command, Supreme Headquarters, Allied Powers, Europe, and North America Air Defense Command and the US Air Force Aerospace Defense Command, NORAD AdCom. He became the NORAD AdCom Inspector General on February 1st, 1977 and retired that same year. And whereas the 144th Fighter Wing in Fresno recently received the F-15, which is a vital fighter aircraft and fulfilling the mission of homeland defense for the Western United States. The contributions made by General Titus to the F-15 have been passed down to the men and women of the 144th Fighter Wing that successfully used the F-15 to fulfill its missions. And whereas today we honor the long and distinguished career of Brigade General Robert F. Titus and we thank him for his contributions to the development of the F-15 aircraft. The city of Fresno is the beneficiary of the service of General Titus and 144th Fighter Wing for the defense of the United States of America. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the council president, Paul Capriolo, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2016 to be Brigadier General Robert F. Titus Day in the city of Fresno.
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, uh, yeah, please. So the, uh, the, the general just, uh, I told him he's now got his own day, named after him in the city of Fresno. And he said, am I in charge now? And I think the answer is yes. We would happily put you in charge. So, uh, we, we thank you so much for your service and thank you for being with us in, in Fresno today. God bless you, sir. All right. Take care. Thank you.
Are you ready for your acting council president?
Yes.
Our next item is a former Air National Guard alumni and member of the 144th Fighter Wing. The next proclamation is the recognizing Brigadier General Clay L. Garrison. Mayor Swearingen?
Come on back up. Well, we are, this is bittersweet for us here in the city of Fresno because our good friend, Brigadier General Clay Garrison has been promoted. He has dutifully served here in Fresno for, how long has it been now?
15 years.
15 years. And, uh, you know, just the, the brief times I've had to be around him with his team over at the, uh, 144th, it's so clear what kind of an impact he's had, both on the base, but also his concern for the community being involved, being a good partner with us here at the city of Fresno. Um, it really has been very special. So we, we understand why you got promoted. You're awesome. So you're going to, you know, to perhaps a higher and better calling. Uh, but we are certainly going to miss you here and we didn't want to let you go without also giving you your own day in the city of Fresno. So now... So now, this day is recognizing both you and such an inspirational figure that you've brought to town. So you get to share this day. Yeah. And you know, I would, I hate to put you on the spot, but I would love for you just to say a few words about your time here in Fresno.
This has been such a great experience for me. The Air National Guard, the National Guard is a community-based organization. And Mayor, you've always been very supportive of the wing. You come out, you always say the right thing to the airmen. This is a great place. And it's a great place to be an airmen and protect the United States. And I, like you, it's bittersweet. It's good to move on, I like to eat, so it's good to have a job. But I'm really going to miss this community and this base. It's been great.
And so, so we're expecting frequent visits, because when you're in like a fighter plane, how long does it take you to get from Sacramento to Fresno?
Thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-five minutes? Oh, that's high-speed rail speed, man. I think maybe faster.
If I can break some windows, nine minutes, maybe ten.
Okay, well, it's good to know you're that close. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution to the record?
Whereas, Brigadier General Clay Garrison serves concurrently as the commander of the 144th Fighter Wing and as an Assistant Adjutant General Air at the California National Guard. And whereas, General Garrison is responsible for the mission readiness and operational effectiveness across a broad spectrum of programs and activities involving five wings and over 4,500 military and civilian personnel serving at 10 locations within California. And whereas, General Garrison works diligently as he oversees the development and operationally-trained, equipped, and mission-ready forces in support of national defense requirements and emergency response relief and recovery operation throughout California. And whereas, General Garrison earned his commission upon graduation from the United States Air Force Academy in 1988 with a Bachelor of Science in Aeronautical Engineering and attended undergraduate pilot training at Shepherd Air Force Base, Texas. Thereafter, and whereas, General Garrison dedicated 14 years to performing active-duty service prior to joining the California Air National Guard in 2002. He is a command pilot with nearly 4,000 hours in the F-16 and F-15, and is a distinguished graduate of the USAF Weapons School F-16 Division. And whereas, we celebrate Brigadier General Clay L. Garrison, an extraordinary man and leader, for his promotion to Brigadier General after serving three years as the wing commander at the 144th Fighter Wing Hangar. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby honor and recognize Brigadier General Clay L. Garrison on his promotion and service to our country. And though he will be sorely missed here in our own community, we wish him great success on his new endeavor. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2016, to be Brigadier General Clay L. Garrison Day in the city of Fresno.
Just want to add, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Council President Capriolo is so sorry he's not here. And he is such a big supporter of yours, of the wing, and he loves being the proud council member from District 4. His staff helped put together these recognitions. He sadly is in the hospital. And honestly, it's the only thing that would keep him from being here. Oh, I thought he was on Skype or something. So, anyway, he obviously is so sorry to miss this day, but please know how deeply appreciative he is of your service to our community. Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. God bless you.
Thank you.
Hear me? Rick?
Come on up. And do any council members want to come down for this? I think our council members from, we've got Yakomi, you all come on up here, everybody, all of our amazing neighborhood leaders. We're so excited you're here. And come on up. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the program you guys have been through? Michaelan, or someone from your?
Yeah, let's get everybody up here together.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm here, my name is Michaelan Lewis, and I represent a group called Action and Change, or Action and Ecomio. But I'm here with a group of other people from two other neighborhoods. There's Patrick here, he's from the El Dorado neighborhood near Fresno State. Martha Cuddell, she's my good luck charm, and I've known her since the fourth grade? Fourth grade. But we reconnected, we lost touch and we reconnected after 40 years, just doing this kind of work. And, I'm sorry, I forget your name. Pauline, and Jan, and Cam, Cam I know, and they're from El Dorado, and, you know, and Chad and his wife, Michelle, and Tashira. And Chad and, and Chad and, I'm sorry again, and Michelle, I'm a little nervous. They're from Yakomi, and Tashira is from El Dorado. And we've been working as a neighborhood revitalization group for about three years now. And it's been a pleasure to work with not only people who have concerns from their neighborhoods, but also with the city. Mayor Swearingen has been very good about backing up a lot of our projects and cheering us on. Councilmember Baines has even committed to one of his staff members to come to some of our meetings and make sure that our answers and our concerns are addressed. And it is a pleasure. This group has been really instrumental and really a big part of the revitalization of Fresno. And we hope to continue this work even beyond when building every capacity program has expired September 30th. So, if you'd like to ever come and join us, just contact any one of us, and we'll be glad to have you come to any one of our meetings. Thank you.
We are so proud of you and so grateful for the time and energy that you've invested in your neighborhoods. And I want to say a special congratulations to this group, because you really are our inaugural resident leaders. And you've been a part of a great demonstration project that we've had going in the city of Fresno over the last roughly five years. It's taken a while for us to better understand how we at City Hall help empower, engage, and support residents in bringing about change in their own neighborhoods. Our role, residents' role, law enforcement, schools, everyone working together. But because of your work and your dedication, we've got a really good model in place in five neighborhoods in our community. Our goal over this next 12 months is to get to another 10 neighborhoods, which means we'd be in 15 neighborhoods. But you are the ones who have trained us here at City Hall on how to best do this work. So you have a very special place in our hearts, and you have played an incredible role, not just in your own neighborhoods, but frankly, citywide, because we're now in the process of figuring out how to expand this in an even bigger way. So, thank you so much for what you've done. I hate to tell you, but you're not finished. We're probably gonna, you know, make you be involved for the rest of time. But hopefully, we'll bring a lot more people along with you. And neighborhood by neighborhood, we're working towards the restoration of our city. So, we've got certificates for each of you. And before we, in fact, I'll begin to hand those out, and Councilmember Baines, you want to say a few words too?
Sure, and I'll make it quick, because I join in the sentiment that Mayor Swearingen expressed. And I can tell you that Councilmember Capriolo, Council President Capriolo, again, would be here, right down here with me right now, because his group in El Dorado Park is represented here. And I know he's as active with his group as I am with mine. But I just want to tell you guys, thank you for the work that you do to our community. I often get, I often get the chance to say that Fresno is a very special place. We have so many active residents and so many people committed and dedicated to the health and revitalization of our community, and it is a pleasure to serve you. So I thank you guys for the time that you invest in this voluntary capacity, to give of your time for our community, because it means quite a bit. And as Mayor Swearingen said, you all are the inaugural class of this work, and we expect you to help other communities do this very work for the rest of the city. So, with that, I think we're handing out certificates. Are we going to call you, women to call, or how do we want to do it?
So there are a number of people who aren't here.
Okay. They're in the community working.
I apologize for not catching everyone's names. Is Michelle Volker?
Her hair is very nice too, right? The mayor's hair is beautiful.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next item is proclamation for Cesar Chavez Day. Councilmember Soria?
Good afternoon. It is actually a very big honor to be here this afternoon and presenting this proclamation, celebrating and commemorating the legacy of Cesar Chavez. I am a daughter of farmworkers, and so if you guys don't know the history of Cesar Chavez and really the impacts that he had for the farmworker community, we've come, the community has come a long way in terms of rights. And so, I'm very honored to be here this afternoon, presenting this proclamation to actually our local principal for the Cesar E. Chavez Adult Ed Center, and really also acknowledging the great work that the center is doing in providing educational opportunities for adults here in Fresno. But just to tell you guys a little bit about Cesar Chavez and the holiday today. So here in the state of California, every March 31st, we celebrate the life and work of Cesar Chavez, because indeed it's his birthday. And many actually observe this day as an actual holiday. Those include the state government, Fresno County even recognizes that as a holiday, so they're off today, and CSU Fresno. So it is amazing to see that there are institutions that really recognize the legacy and celebrate by not just acknowledging the day as an important day, but actually observing as a holiday. And so I hope that soon the city of Fresno will too recognize Cesar Chavez as a holiday that we can observe. So, watch out, I'll probably be working on that issue over the next few months. But today, I am proud to present this proclamation. Cesar Chavez was a labor organizer and a union leader who led efforts in support of pay raises and improved working conditions for farmworkers. He organized nonviolent protests, marches, and rallies to focus national attention to the plight of farmworkers. For us, it is really critical that we reaffirm these core values of Cesar Chavez and really continue to push for social justice and equality throughout our community here in the city of Fresno. This holiday is really rooted in Chavez's beliefs in community service, nonviolence, and respect for our fellow brothers and sisters. Principal Pacino, I wanted to give you an opportunity to say a few words about the Cesar Chavez Adult Education Center, how the legacy of Cesar Chavez really drives the work being done in your center.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. My name is Andre Pacino, I'm the principal at Fresno Adult School, and our main campus is the Cesar E. Chavez Adult Education Center. And it's an honor to serve and as a role as a leader there, the principal. And we really try to continue the various, his legacy as well as the tenants that he had, one of them being education, and providing that opportunity for our community members to gain power and be able to gain a seat at the table through education. And so one of the things that we do do every year with the partnership of El Concilio is do a Chavez Day Service of Learning. And so, Mr. Gayona, who's here with me, is actually one of the founding members of that day. And so every year, our students, along with community members, go and we have an event at the Sorian Theater. Then we march through O Street in commemoration of the march that took place. And so, for me, it's a great opportunity to share the struggles that my father had as a migrant worker, and my grandfather too. And the reason why I'm here is because he's, they were trendsetters in opening up the door for myself to be here, and the same thing we do today with our students. And so that gives younger generations opportunity to not take for granted what they have. And so that's the one thing that we try to do. And our charge is, and a lot of people don't hear about this, is, that our charge at school with is that we're city changers. And we change the city through education and through the home. If we can empower the parents to become educated and to gain a better workplace environment, better job, then at that point, their students as well, their children, will become better individuals as well. So, thank you again for having us here.
Thank you for being here. I did also want to hand it over to Benansio Gayona. I know he is a fearless advocate here in our community and has been involved in many of the activities that happen here with Cesar Chavez, and was involved in the movement. And so I want to allow him just to say a couple of words regarding the importance of today.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Esmeralda. I also want to thank the City Council and Mayor Paul Caproglio, who could not be here. Ladies and gentlemen, the day will come when 1993 will be, shall we say, vindicated. That is a year that we tried to instill here, a real recognition of Cesar Chavez, recognition of Cesar Chavez Boulevard, and it was denied. But as you can see, we continue the struggle in the form of justice, and we will succeed. And we will succeed because there are people like you of goodwill that understand justice. And so thank you very much, especially you, Esmeralda Soria.
Thank you, Benansio, for all the work that you continue to do here in our community. I also just wanted to point out some facts, interesting facts, that I learned about really some connections of the city of Fresno actually have with Chavez. So, back in the March of 1966, we know that Chavez led, was leading a farmworker strike, and they did have the march from Delano to Sacramento. This is very well-known and very well-documented. They actually stopped here in the city of Fresno. And at that time, they met with the current, the mayor at the time, Mayor Floyd Hyde, here at City Hall, and they did hold a rally in the Stecca Theater, which featured Chavez and the striking farmworkers. Again, that rally, as was mentioned, took place this past Thursday, March 24th, was it, last Thursday when it took place? Oh, the 27th, the march just took place. But again, kind of a replica of really the history that exists in really recognizing and celebrating the work that was done by Cesar Chavez. And so again, I want to thank you guys for being here. So Clerk, if you could read the proclamation to the record?
Whereas, every year on March 31st, we celebrate Cesar E. Chavez Day in honor of one of America's greatest champions for social justice and equality. And whereas, alongside Dolores Herter, Cesar E. Chavez founded the United Farmer, Farmworkers to advance farmworkers' rights across the country. And whereas, Cesar E. Chavez inspired millions of Americans to engage in social and political activism in the 1960s and 70s, and today, a new generation of organizers carry his legacy forward. And whereas, this holiday calls on all Americans to reaffirm the core values that Cesar E. Chavez promoted, including service to others, nonviolence, acceptance of all... Chavez promoted, including service to others, nonviolence, acceptance of all people, and respect for the environment. And whereas we encourage Fresnoans to participate in activities and events that support the contributions that Cesar E. Chavez has made to our community and the entire Central Valley. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and the council of the city of Fresno, do hereby recognize the life, work, and legacy of Cesar E. Chavez and declare March 31st, 2016, as Cesar E. Chavez Day in the city of Fresno.
Go, you're next. Our next proclamation by Member Soria is Transgender Day of Visibility.
So today, I'm very proud to invite Transemotion to the council chambers in honor of Transgender Day of Visibility. Transemotion is a community organization dedicated to advocating on behalf of the transgender community through support groups, outreach, and education. Transgender, gender diverse, and gender nonconforming individuals are an important part of our community. It is through advocacy, education, and unity that we can overcome injustice and combat transphobia throughout our community. To help that mission, on April 10th, the Transemotion group will host the inaugural Transgender Day of Visibility event here at the city of Fresno. And I'll go ahead and let Jess or if there's anyone else that wants to share a couple of words about that event.
Yes. Thank you, Esmeralda. First, I want to say thank you to the city council, the office of the mayor, and particularly to you and your staffers, Terry Cox and Gilbert Felix, for welcoming us to the city hall and to getting this proclamation put together and signed. I've been a resident of Fresno ever since I was born. So today, I can say very proudly that in Fresno, the transgender community is no longer invisible. So I want to thank you for that, and we're very excited for this day too. Instead of looking at the trans community as victims, we are a vibrant part of the Fresno community as workers, as business folks, and yeah, so I'm very excited. So thank you very much. Standing here with me today is Zoya Zindel, he's our president of Transemotion. There's Claire Deveraux, she is our, sorry, she's a board member, and I'm also the vice chair. And Jayden is a volunteer and very excited to, you know, be a part of this event as well. So.
More details about the event?
Yes. Transgender Day of Visibility, we're going to have it at Alliance University on April 10th, from 12 to 4:00. There will be vendors of our community as well as resources, and we are also going to be holding some entertainment and workshops, specifically a Trans 101 workshop where we talk about the vocabulary of the community and how people who want to support our community can be better allies. So we're welcoming, we want everyone who has questions, who wants to learn more, and who wants to support our community grow to come to that event.
Great, thank you. And as a supporter and ally of Transemotion, I want to encourage folks to attend. It is important that we learn about this community and really embrace the diversity that exists within our community. And I want to give you guys really kudos because it does take a lot of courage and brave to talk about some of these issues here in our city. Sometimes it can be challenging. So I want to really thank you guys for taking the lead and being brave to make sure that our community is educated about these issues. And so again, I'm very proud to be here today, and I want to thank my council colleagues and the mayor for signing on to the proclamation, to really ensuring that our community is educated and we give recognition to the transgender community here in the city of Fresno. So Clerk, if you can read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the city of Fresno recognizes all citizens shall have equal rights and opposes discrimination against the transgender, gender diverse, and gender nonconforming community. And whereas transgender, gender diverse, and gender nonconforming Americans are an important part of our nation's tapestry and have contributed of every facet of society, yet continue to face discrimination. And whereas it is through advocacy, education, and unity that we can overcome injustice towards all groups of people who may experience inequality. And whereas Transgender Day of Visibility celebrates the accomplishments of transgender individuals while fighting transphobia throughout our community. And whereas the Transemotion inaugural Transgender Day of Visibility will be held in the city of Fresno on April 10th, 2016. Transemotion invites people from throughout the Fresno area and our Central Valley to show support and celebrate the transgender community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and the council of the city of Fresno, do hereby recognize the important advocacy work of Transemotion on behalf of the transgender community and do proclaim March 31st, 2016, as Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Fresno.
Thank you. And I think one last plug for something that is happening tonight, right?
Yeah, tonight at 6:00 PM at Shaw and Blackstone on the Peace Corner, which is the southeast corner, we'll be holding a rally and march to celebrate transgender individuals in our community, the contributions, accomplishments. So come on out if you are able and come celebrate Transgender Day of Visibility with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That completes the ceremonial awards portion today.
It's currently being used in Modesto, Burbank, and Los Angeles. I've personally spoke to Charlie Beck, the Los Angeles Police Chief. I've been very impressed with the accuracy of this software program. We currently have a program called Public Engines that serves a multitude of purposes, but we believe that PredPol offers us a predictive policing solution software that's going to be very effective and easy to use. And what it does is by shift, or by hour, or whatever, however you program it, it will within a 500 square feet area, 500 feet by 500 feet, provide hot maps that will tell officers during the course of their shift where it would be beneficial for them to spend their patrol time, because that is the likelihood for certain types of incidents to occur. And they have tested the accuracy of it. It's very accurate in many cases. It's not beyond fault, but it is something that gives us a better feel for where we should patrol. And it does differentiate between past hot mapping systems that we've utilized, where you look at past data and it tells you where crime was. This goes beyond that and tells you where crime is likely to occur. And again, very, very good system, user-friendly, where you can either send it on the mobile digital terminals to our patrol cars that tell officers during the course of their shift where they should patrol based on these maps, or you can print it out and give it to officers during the shift. And they change it different times of the day, so you can divide it up by shift, or half-shifts, or however you want to for that program. So that's the item that you have before you. It's no fiscal impact. Again, it's grant monies that will fund this. And open up to public comment and any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I've got cards from this morning. It looks like the people are gone, but I'll read their names. Chris Breedlove. They got this item too. Bryson White. Booker T. Lewis. Paul White. Noel Riggins. Come on up. Just got one of them.
Good afternoon again. The reason I came back today is because I was really unfamiliar with this particular software. And predictive policing causes a major concern for me. Gulf War veteran, but more importantly, I'm an African-American man living in a community which is, used to be called the Dog Pound. And I have major concerns about predictive policing. Because if you look at the implicit bias that already stands in dealing with African-American men in terms of crime, then you add to it the area that I live in, and then you add on top of that predictive policing, which may encompass the area in which I live in, what kind of fallout is there going to be concerning people like myself who happen to live in these general areas? Again, I'm not necessarily saying that I'm against this particular software because I really don't know anything about it. I saw it this morning when I looked at the agenda. However, I'm going to be doing more research on it. And I just really feel uncomfortable about these kinds of programs coming forward without any real community input and involvement in these. So that's my statement for today.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public want to comment? If not, I'll bring to the council, Councilmember Baines.
Yeah, thanks, Lee. Hey, Chief, a couple of questions really quick. So I know we've been talking about this for a while. I'll wait for you to come to the lectern. I know we've been talking about this for a while, and it's kind of an interesting concept. Councilmember Brandau and I were talking over the break about Minority Report, kind of that whole predictive policing. But this is obviously different than that. And so is this going to be kind of a daily thing for officers? Like, for instance, you logging on to a swing shift or what have you, and you can kind of have an idea of where they think something may occur? And I'm thinking that this is going to be really useful for maybe gang violence and what have you, if there have been things that have started up. It's probably going to be difficult to predict domestic assaults or what have you, but are we really kind of looking at this for an enhanced tool for some of that gang violence and whatnot?
Yes, not only gang violence, but property crimes. And I think over the years, we've used different terms in law enforcement, directed patrol, where you would say, okay, we've had some incidents occur in this area, this is where we want you to spend your time, if you have time in between calls. I haven't had a lot of time in between calls. But this gives with some accuracy, higher level of accuracy, where that directed patrol time should be. Not for the intended purpose of just stopping people where we shouldn't stop people, but having a presence in those areas. And for example, right now, we tell our officers, I tell our officers, I want you out in neighborhoods, I want you to get out of your car, I want you contacting people, stopping in certain neighborhoods. What better way to determine what neighborhoods those officers could or should be in during their shift, making those community contacts in a positive way, and being able to also satisfy an effort to deter crime or prevent crime by being in those areas that have the highest likelihood for crime to occur? So we're trying to bridge the two, but they have had some really good accuracy in Los Angeles in predicting where shootings are likely to occur based on the data. And so that's what we're hoping to have. We know that when you have a presence of law enforcement, there's less of a likelihood for a shooting to occur. So we're not there, and I do respect Mr. Riggins and Noel and what he's saying. We're not there. It doesn't determine who's going to commit the crime, it just determines the area where crime is likely to occur based on past data. And there is a value given to each of those types of crimes, and there is a system in place, an algorithm in place, that then allows you to know with some increased accuracy where you should be during certain times. So that's the purpose, and to get it into the hands of the officers very timely, on a daily basis, on a shift basis, so they know where to be during the course of their shift versus random patrols.
And Chief, kind of like you were saying in LA, they had, I think you said LA or Modesto, they showed some success with this. Kind of talk about how that, what that looks like, so they can say, okay, we log on and, you know, we think that within, I don't know, three days, there may be a shooting in this area. Are we getting, are they that close to accuracy?
Actually, more accurate. It's on a daily basis. And those hot maps will move for maybe a day shift to a swing shift, because during different hours of the day, crime moves. And so it will move, so day shift officers will get one particular map, swing shift officers get a second map, and midnight officers a third map. And it also ties into our automated vehicle locator system, so that we can tell where officers have been during the course of their shift pursuant to when those times are. So if we do have crimes... So, if we do have crimes happen and officers weren't there during that time, uh, then we know that, you know, we have to do a better job of, of getting officers in those areas. Uh, we have to have a sufficient number of officers to do that as well. And the other is traffic collisions. Um, historically, we look at past data, and wherever there's a, a high likelihood for collisions to occur, that's where our officers are assigned, traffic officers, uh, to look for traffic violations. Uh, this does that for us. Uh, and it is, again, a very reliable system. They, not only in Los Angeles, they've had, uh, in one jurisdiction that they tested in, where there is at a 20% reduction. Um, and so, Atlanta, Alhambra, Modesto, Santa Cruz, and a number of other places. So, I, I believe it's a very, very good system, and, uh, it's going to be county-wide once we incorporate.
No, that, and, and I've been very interested, I can remember years ago trying to, when I would have to work with, uh, gang officers and things were dusting up, and you get information, but it would, oh, sometimes a patrol officer may be the last person to find that out.
Yes.
Um, but they're always the first responders. So, I think having some increased intelligence in their hands, uh, it sounds like customizable intelligence too, at the patrol level, you know, based on the shift, the time, and the officer, and the beat, and what have you. So, um, yeah, I think that, I think this is a, certainly, you said this is for a, a one-year, one-year contract with a, the potential of a one-year extension?
Two, uh, two-year extensions, potential for two-year extensions. And, uh, I, I know we're going to be extremely pleased with the product, so I, I would anticipate we're going to be in this long-term with these BSCC monies.
Yeah, and Chief, would it be possible, and I think what would be really good is maybe about six months if we come back. We, I'd love to see kind of, you know, how accurate it, it was in Fresno. Uh, and I know it's going to be tweaks for the first, you know, year or so, but it'd be good for probably the council to see maybe a six-month review and just say, hey, this is, these are the types of incidents that were predicted, and, you know, this is kind of where we are. So, I think it's a, it's a good thing, and I'll, I'll be happy to support it today. Thanks.
Councilmember Brandell?
Well Chief, this is, like the last item, it's technology, but it, but it's so much unlike the last item. Um, I think it's fantastic addition, you know, out there on, for the force. It's not having to do with a database of individuals, so much less sensitivity required. Um, so, I'm going to make a motion that we support your technology component today.
Thank you.
Member Soria? Sorry, motion by member Brandell, second by member Baines?
Great. I just, um, and I know, I think we pointed out, it's different, different technology from what we spoke earlier this morning. Um, just one thing, and I think, um, and I concur with bringing back, how long from now, you said? Six months?
Six months.
Just to, to kind of get a report as to how it's working. Um, one of the situations that I want to make sure that we're, we don't, um, get into, you know, we, a lot of us support community policing and really getting out to the community to build those relationships. Um, I, I know that this tool would, will give us, um, information to predict maybe where crime, um, will be happening to prevent that. I just want to make sure that, um, it, it works, um, together with, um, a community policing model where we can really implement, um, that and build, um, beyond that, rather than just focus on dispatching, uh, resources where we think crime is going to happen. Um, so I just want to make sure that it, that these two do work together, and so I look forward to hearing, um, through reporting, um, when you come back to us to see, um, how that all works together as well. Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Um, I support this item. Anything we can, uh, give our police department to help them in their mission and keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the support.
Okay, the screen is clear. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Measure passes 5-0 with members Capriolio, missing. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't count here. Six-oh with member Capriolio. Paul got Capri, Capriiglio. Sorry about that, Paul. Next item is item 3B, Bill for Introduction, uh, by member Baines.
Yeah, council, so you'll see here, there is a, a series of bills, 3B and BC, that I'm going to introduce today. Uh, we are going to, uh, I'm not going to go into my staff report as you all, uh, my staff report presentation. Uh, you all can, hopefully you all had an opportunity to review that, and, uh, staff report, but I am going to introduce the items today. I won't be asking for a vote. Uh, this is a two-step process, uh, so this is simply to introduce the concept today. I'll ask both of these items to come back on April 21st. Is that city attorney, um, can, do I have to have a certain time limit before they come back, or?
No, you can set it for city council, or timed item, whichever you want to do.
And I don't need to vote on these items today? We don't, we're, for an introduction, we don't need a vote today?
Right. For, simply for introduction, a vote is not required.
All right, so that's what, that's what we'll be doing today. Um, but we will take public comment, uh, for those who are interested in, uh, making a comment, uh, on the, on these items. So, uh, council president, that is my, those are my comments for today. Uh, we'll bring this back, uh, mid-April, uh, where we, we will have a very full discussion and debate about the issue.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience want to speak on this item? Please come forward. Give your name and address for the record.
Need the address? Nicole Garing, uh, Associated Builders and Contractors, 4577 Las Pecitas Road, Unit C in Livermore. Uh, before I start my comments, just for clarification, I was just ever in the city clerk's office, and they gave me the understanding on a bill for introduction. If there, you can, if it's introduced and there's no action, and if it's introduced and, well, if there's no action on it, then it doesn't come up, then it's reintroduced. So, what you would do then is on April 21st, you would reintroduce it again. Is that what your, what your plan is?
City attorney, can you clarify the process, please?
Typically, we do take a vote at introduction, but it's not required. And just typically, this is not in the rules anywhere. If there is a vote at introduction and it fails, it may be chosen not to bring it back because you know where it's headed. But nonetheless, a vote is not required at introduction, and it can come back for final adoption without any further action.
Okay. Well, we'll get the, um, I'll, I'll also get the opinion from the city clerk's office, so we'll have that as well. So, thank you very much. Um, so the first item I wanted to, uh, comment on, um, our recommendation for the first item is that there would be no change. Uh, the state, the state, uh, sets and governs the rules over, uh, the hiring and dispatch of apprentices. So, um, and the, the, uh, contractors have an obligation to, uh, 20%, a 20% ratio for the hiring of apprentices to, so for, um, so what would happen here is if the definition of a viable apprenticeship program is not a DAS, uh, state-approved apprenticeship program, it's going to be problematic for people who are requesting apprentices. Contractors have to, by law, request apprentices from every program in the geographical area. So, in order to do that, they are, uh, requesting apprentices, and they have no, they do not choose which apprentices are dispatched to them from any program. So, they have no way of knowing if, if the, the apprentice, where they had their, their pre-apprenticeship training from the apprenticeship program, or if they had it from another, um, avenue. So, we, uh, would recommend no change on that ordinance. Thank you. Do you want me to stay up for the second item?
Uh, council president, I'm okay, uh, if we, in, in my opinion, I think she wants to talk to both items, 3B and 3C, and if she wanted to stay here to talk to 3C, I'd be fine.
City attorney, can we address both items that's related?
You can address them together, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, in regards to the second item, in regards to the national targeted hiring ordinance, we, um, we very much appreciate, um, councilmember Baines reaching out to us. In fact, we had submitted an alternative on August 12th to your office, and I didn't know if you ever had a chance to look at that, because it didn't, didn't receive a response, uh, from your office in regards to that. I have an email dated August 12th, so you might want to take a look at that. Um, but it's, it's more of an internship program in order to foster and grow, um, the targeted population that, that we're talking about, so that we can get them into, um, into working and being hired by the contractors. So, in regards to your, uh, current ordinance, um, we're not in support because it doesn't incentivize contractors to participate on city contracts. In fact, um, they are going to be penalized on numerous levels, from withholding any portion of all payments if they're in non-compliance, all the way up to suspension and debarment, um, if they're in non-compliance on being able to, uh, comply with, with the city ordinance as, um, as proposed. Um, we, we obviously are working with all community partners, we're, we're working with various, um, uh, local educators in the community to put training and pre-apprenticeship programs together. And, um, the, unfortunately, our members had to go back and run their businesses, but I wanted to say that they, they definitely are very interested in a program like this and, and want to find ways to be, you know, we challenge the city to come up some, with something that incentivizes them to want to hire people. Uh, there, there's some questions, is if the existing, um, is the city then going into the, uh, the, the business of apprenticeship? And so, that doesn't really work because the apprentices are, the apprenticeship programs are run by the apprenticeship programs, and that's where the apprentices are located. So, I don't know how they're going to be run out of the city, because we're not even allowed to give you that, that information. In regards to the journeymen, we'd like to have more information about the journeymen on the city hall list. Um, are they, are they current journeymen already, or are these new people that are coming into the, into the pipeline? So, we're happy to work with you. Uh, we want incentives, we want voluntary, they can't support mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the dais. And nobody's punched up, I'll make a few comments. I share some of the concerns of the ABC. As a contractor myself, who's bid on projects, I know the difficulty involved. I'd like to work with you, member Baines, see if we can find a way to, I think the intention is, is, uh, is great, to try to find employment for people who hit hardest or the community, the highest unemployment rates. But if it can be done in a way that is, is more incentivized, less punitive, I would support it. But, um, I'm, I'm offering to meet with you prior to the, uh, April 23rd?
21st.
Yeah, so let's get together. Okay.
And I'll just make a couple of closing comments, and, and again, I'm not going to get into full debate today, but I'll make some very, very small comments. And I appreciate the offer, councilmember Brandon. Nicole, appreciate the remarks. We did work together for a while, and I'll think that I saw the, uh, email from April 12th, and actually, your recommendations are probably going to be incorporated in the final product. So, I mean, I think there were some good recommendations, uh, that you made regarding that, but, um, the intent of this, and I want to be really clear, so we are all on the same page when we come back April 21st, and even when we meet prior. The, uh, intent of this is about putting people to work. So, I don't want that to get lost in the discussion. This is about people in our city that are unemployed, and that there is very little that's being done by this institution to put them to work. This is not to incentivize contractors. This is to incentivize people going to work for training. So, I want to be really clear about what we're talking about. I'm not trying to, contractors are getting money from this institution to build projects. We, that's a, quite a bit of incentive. They have incentive, they have money that we're giving them. So, I want to make sure that the context of the conversation is very clear. We are talking about putting people to work in our city. We incentivize private contractors and private investors at an astonishing rate in this city. So, my discussion is going to be about incentivizing a workforce. So, I'm happy to have those discussions, um, in whatever context we, in whatever manner we want to have them. I'm happy to find solutions. I, I, you, you know that I am, I've always shown that willingness, but I will not be deterred about what this is about. This will not, this conversation will not be hijacked about contractors. This is about putting people to work first. We are spending our taxpayer dollars to our contractors, and we appreciate them. And we're going to be requiring that some folks have some care and concern for the workforce that is severely undeveloped in our city. So, with that, that will be the introduction, and, uh, we will, like I said, I look forward very much so to a, a full debate on, uh, April 21st, and be happy to work with you, councilmember Brand, or whomever else, in the meantime.
Member Soria? So, we have all the items completed. Make sure I'm right, city attorney, on the agenda?
We did unscheduled communication? Yes, now I think we're...
No, we have, we have one item left, unscheduled communication. Well...
Did we do it?
Did you?
Okay. I think we just returned to closed session then.
Okay, so, with that, I'll close the meeting. Probably my last time ever as council president, for one day. Thank you. Anything to report, city attorney?
Yes, we will not be reporting after closed session.
You got it, Todd? Thanks.